Welcome to the Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024 meeting. May I have a roll call, please?
Clark.
Present.
Dutra.
Is this on? Hello here. Yes.
Montesino. Porosco.
Present.
Parker.
Here.
Salsido.
Here.
Giro's Carter.
Here.
We have Coram.
All right. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to excuse Councilmember Montesino?
And to excuse Councilmember Montesino?
One second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Clark.
Aye.
Dutra.
Aye.
Porosco.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Salsido.
Aye.
Giro's Carter.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to item two, reports to council, and we're beginning with two A. A report on Parks and Community Service Department's Summer Program Highlights by Recreation Superintendent Negrete. Welcome. No worries. Technical difficulties.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, councilmembers and members of the public. My name is Ime N'Negrete. I'm Recreation Superintendent for the Parks and Community Services Department. I'm here to report on summer recap of the recreation.
Mel, can you get a little closer to your mic? It's kind of hard to.
Of what the Recreation Division did during the summer months of May through August 2024. Just grab it like you're a singer. So we'll start off with older adults, which is actually at the Watsonville Senior Center. The facility actually went through renovations. A coffee bar was completed early spring. The kitchen is in its final, final stages. And then we have a new entrance doors and front reception area, which is more inviting for anyone that walks through our doors. The senior centers also had various special events for, to celebrate Older Americans Month. We had a senior resource fair in May at the City Plaza and to kick off Fourth of July festivities, we had Second Annual Puppet Parade at Franch Park with 25 people in attendance and 13 puppies as well. And Parks and Rec Month, we hosted art and crafts with grandchildren weekly in July where our older adults were invited to bring in their grandkids and do an activity with them. There is an arts and crafts and just kind of have lunch with them as well. Moving on to youth development, under youth development, you'll find our camps, our science workshop, our youth center, and our youth enrichment classes. So Camp Wow was once again an eight-week camp that themes included blasts from the past, Camp Olympics, and lights, camera, and action. Our science workshop over at the Marinovich Community Center had special mini-events such as Star Wars Day, where youth were able to ride the hovercrafts, make LED lightsabers, to Community Repair Days, where any community member needing any item to be repaired or painted, they can come and do it, do it that day on Community Repair Day. Our youth center hosted, continues to host our Passport to Fun for middle and high school students. They had various field trips from Topgolf, Boardwalk, hiking, and their favorite was Great America and horseback riding at the Hope Horses and Kids in Salinas. They also hosted various special events from Star Wars Movie Night, Summer Carnival, National Night Out, Hip-Hop Night, which entailed youth artist showcase with a DJ, hip-hop performances in an open mic. We also offered youth enrichment classes, which actually happened to be our Play Well classes for youth between the ages of five to 12. There was three sessions averaging 15 youth, and themes included bots, animal adventures, and adventures in STEM. Moving on to sports, we had our, our eight-week summer aquatics program. Eight hundred and twenty-nine participants between the ages of six to adult participated in the ninety swim lessons that we offered. We had our very first ever junior lifeguard camp, and we enrolled actually a hundred and eight youth in that program. We also had skate dogs offered at no cost to PDUUSD students and subsidized through Measure R. It was a three weeks worth of camp for 25 youth between the ages of five and 13, learn to skateboard at Franch Park. At the end of the program, they received not only the skateboard that they used to learn the skateboarding, but then also they received free safety gear. Skyhawk Sports Camp also offered at no cost to PDUUSD students and subsidized fee through Measure R for Alfred Basketball, Volleyball, and Golf, and a multi-sports camp for youth between the ages of five and 12. We also had itty-bitty sports, sixty-nine youth between the ages of three to five, had their first sports experience participating in T-ball and flag football. We continue to have pickleball, and twenty-nine participants over the age of 10 participated in pickleball lessons over at Callahan Park. We partnered with American Red Cross, and we were able to offer classes. We had eighteen new lifeguards learn water rescue skills, and twenty-three community members were trained in adult pediatric CPR, first aid, and ED. And then in terms of partnerships, we partnered with Roy Contreras and friends, who hosted a free soccer clinic where over thirty-five youth got to learn new soccer skills from local pros from Monterey Bay FC. The youth also received a free backpack with school supplies and a free soccer ball. Moving on to special events, we hosted the wine, beer, and art walk on June 8th with over three hundred and fifty registered and about seventeen stops. We had six music in the plaza concerts. July is Parks and Recreation Month, and we offered over twenty-five free activities from community members of all ages, including our First Annual Flick and Fill event, which we showed a movie while participating, while participants enjoyed floating in the pool. And of course, the Spirit of Watsonville Fourth of July Parade had fifty parade entries and over twelve thousand spectators. And last but not least, our Strawberry Festival, we had over fifty-seven thousand visitors visit downtown Watsonville during this festival. Moving on to facility rentals, so our Civic Plaza Community Room continues to be very popular. We had fifty internal reservations and eighteen private. Our joint use agreement with the school district for EA Hall Synthetic Field brought in a hundred and two private rentals. Ramsey Park and Watsonville Senior Center were actually closed for construction from the Renaissance to the kitchen renovation happening at the senior center. And the Vets Hall, which we've already leased with the county, is actually still not open as we're pending some inspections before we open it up to the public. And of course, everything that we do is not possible without our customer service team, who handled over three thousand transactions. Fifty-seven percent were online registrations. And to help make the environment a little bit more welcoming as people walk in and wait, we upgraded with a TV to stream and promote our department activities. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments or questions from council? Councilmember Dutra?
Thank you, Mayor. It's so weird to be talking into this thing. I just have a couple of comments and one question, actually. I first want to say thank you for all the hard work that you guys have done over the years. I remember when I here a decade ago, and things did not look like they're in the place that they are now. So I remember a lot of our buildings were not being rented, and we were having a hard time renting them. We had a lot of our programs on the verge of being cut, and so I feel that you guys have done such a great job revitalizing all of this and really saving it. So I want to say thank you for that. I also want to say thank you for the improvements to the senior center. I would go there every week. I would go with her a lot of times, and I'm definitely a supporter of Meals on Wheels, and I would be serving there as well. So seeing the improvements that we're doing to the center and to the seniors, giving them the opportunity of a new building is, I'm appreciative as well. So you guys have been doing a great, great job. Also, all the programming that we just talked about. My question is this. Next year, we are going to be the plaza will be shut down for renovations. A lot of these programs are going to be displaced. Have we been thinking how we're going to be moving forward with these, with these events that we celebrate every single year, being that the plaza is going to be probably literally fenced in, I would imagine?
I would, I would, oh, hi, everybody. Good afternoon. Nicole Baca, Parks and Community Services Director. Thanks for, thanks for all of the kudos and compliments. I'm glad that's all being recognized. When we did this presentation, or when Emelda did this presentation to our Parks and Rec Commission, I was almost brought to tears just thinking about how far we've come over the past few years. So definitely appreciate the, the recognition that, that we've come a long way. Your question about the city plaza being closed when we go into construction is something I think that's top of mind for a lot of us, day in and day out. We've been talking with all of our partners as well. Jesus, who runs our weekly farmer's market, we've been in conversations with him about where does the farmer's market go when the plaza's closed off for that year. We're definitely talking with our special events committee about what happens with the parade and the Strawberry Festival, Music in the Plaza. But we don't have solidified plans as of yet for any of those. They're all kind of, kind of work in progress, but our intent is to not let any of those, those events pause while we're in construction. We're just going to figure out other ways to make it all happen. So I wouldn't worry about that, but things, things will definitely look differently next year.
Okay, I'm glad to hear that you're not going to be pausing any of the events, and that's kind of what my concern was, is, you know, you do have the Strawberry Festival downtown, you have the Fourth of July Parade. You just have, you know, a movie in the park. So I just want to make sure that it sounds like, why would I even question you guys are not on top of it? But it sounds like you're on top of it. So thank you very much for all the hard work you guys are putting in.
Councilmember Park.
Okay, I want to reiterate, thank you very much for that very comprehensive, yet it went quickly, presentation. So we appreciate that. And I want to reiterate what Councilman Dutra said, especially during the pandemic. It was oh-so crazy during that time where literally we needed the parks and all the programs as much as we could. We were limited on what we could do because of how close every, but being outside and having everything come back and having lived through that and seen it. I want to say kudos to you, Nick, but you know, your entire squad of people and all the new people that you've been able to bring on too in the past few years, because I know how robust this has been in many years past, decades past too. And you guys have brought it up to that level, and now you've been expanding it, and massey mas, you know, that's what we want. But still, the kids and the people of the city of Watsonville very much appreciate you. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
I think everything has already been said. Just a huge, huge, huge congratulations on all the amazing work. Very proud of the amount of service that we're providing to kids and youth in our community, and I just want to thank staff and anyone else who was involved in making this happen.
Councilmember Salsido.
And a slightly different question. My first job was a youth lifeguard. The kiddos after this program, are they certified? Could they potentially work at a pool, or are they referred to getting their certifications? Usually it takes a little bit longer than a week, but the CPR and first aid classes usually can get done, at least that portion or requirement.
So the, the hundred and eight that went through it, it was through our junior lifeguard program, and definitely it does take more than the week that we were able to offer it. So they kind of got just their feet wet, you could say. And so we are hoping that with time, we're able to continue this program as well as get them as eventually lifeguards for our aquatics program.
All right, so I guess the last comment will be from me if there's no other comments. I just really quickly wanted to say thank you so much. This makes me really happy looking at all of the things that we do. And at my high school reunion, that was a twenty-year high school reunion, a few, like a month ago. One of my friends who had moved out of the area, she, she came up to me and was like, oh, my gosh, I just want to say thank you because you guys are doing such amazing things for Watsonville, and it's, you guys have so many programs for families and seniors and kids. And I was like, I will tell my staff. So I'm telling you. So, good job. And I also just want to say thank you to the voters for approving Measure R, so we can do all this cool stuff. So just wanted to throw that out there as well. So thank you very much. With that, we're going to go ahead and move forward to our next item. Item two B, Report on Pavement Management Plan by Public Works and Utilities Director Lindberg. Welcome.
Would you say you can hear me? Yeah. Good evening, council. I'm excited to present this tonight. I'm just going to give a little bit of background, then I'll introduce our co-presenter, and we'll get started. So if you see it does say DFT. One of the things I really wanted with this plan was not just to come to council with the finalized plan that didn't have input. So we have had several key benchmarks of input from the community, from residents, from different groups who took it to the Traffic Advisory Committee, and now tonight. So we will have an opportunity, like what you're seeing tonight, and we'll get to it, are some, some options for implementation, and there will be time for you to, you know, digest it, give feedback before we finalize it. So I just wanted to preface with that. And with that, I'll introduce Harrison Associates was selected through a competitive RFP. There's two components. There's the pavement management plan, which is this, and that will be finalized by the end of the winter. Then there's the pavement program management, which is ongoing to help us with staff augmentation for being able to design and construct the roads that we will determine from the plan. So the plan is like one and done. The pavement program manager will be with us ongoing. So I'll introduce Randall, and you will see Randall periodically over the next several years. So with that, I will turn it over to Randall. You might have to get a little closer to.
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, thank you so much for having me. My name is Randall Bliss. I'm a registered civil engineer with over thirty years' experience in roadway planning, construction, and design. I'm here today to talk to you about the pavement management plan, as Courtney mentioned. And I want to just start out with the outline we have for today. I'll start off with an introduction. And I'll describe to you what a pavement management plan is, how it's developed. The assessment of the plan, the condition that was determined from the assessments we did. I'll go over the maintenance approaches that we're opposing to use, and I'll provide you with some recommendations for the next steps, and then open it up for Q and A. So with the introduction, roadway system is one of the city's largest and most visible assets. It requires maintenance and repair, just like any other large asset. But to properly maintain and understand the system, we need data. So we had to, we have to collect data, and we have to perform analysis on this data. So the collection of the data and the platform in which it's all put into and the analysis performed is called the pavement management plan in general terms. So what is a pavement management program? It's an asset management tool for roadways in particular. You would have other things for facilities similarly. With this, we perform an inventory of the entire city. We look at all the roads in the city, and we get condition data on that. And we, there's a rating scale from one to one hundred for each of the streets, one hundred being a new street.
Excuse me. I apologize for interrupting, but it's really difficult to hear. If you could be louder, or if we can kick it up a little bit.
I'll make it a little closer. There you go.
That's better. Thank you.
Sorry. Yeah, so the pavement condition, as I said, is a kind of a rating that we get from the inspections we do on the street. And then we put in this data and retrieval system, like I said. And with the pavement analysis, we can do quick analysis. We can look at things in the future, see how much they cost, how much things decay. What, what is the best performance for the money we have? And we develop maintenance strategies with that. And it's also required by the federal government for, to receive funding. You have to show that you're responsibly managing this asset, and you know it, and understand it completely. So that's a brief introduction of what a pavement management system is. This is kind of a graphic that shows a similar thing. On the left here, we have all the different attributes that we collect. And we put it into this database or pavement management system itself, and that spits out the condition ratings and all the matrix and plans that we scenarios that we can run out of this plan. So the, the brain that does this is a program called Street Saber. And it's made by MTC up in Northern California, the Bay Area, and we use that program as the pavement management tool, does all the thinking for us. So this plan, as I said, has all these steps in it where you're collecting the data. We perform field reviews. We get the condition, treatment options, as I discussed. But the main thing about this slide I want to point out is the, is the quality control process that happens during this. So during the inspections, we re-inspect ten percent of the streets and make sure we're in the same range as the inspector that's collecting the data. We also look at the data itself, and when we have it, inspections in the data pool, we're looking for wild variations in the PC and any inconsistencies we're seeing in that during quality care. And also on the analytics and reports, making sure that the unit prices are correct and all the numbers and budget scenarios that we're using are accurate. Other factors are kind of softer factors that go into play are the planned work that the city has. There's been committed projects that have already come to council that have been approved, and we have to honor those. So we look at that. We also look at where we've been already. We don't want to go back to streets that we were just at. So we look at the work history. We also look at lessons learned, where we can deliver the projects in a better way. Public comment is a big part. Equity and community need. We'll be talking about that a little bit later. And then any additional requirements might be federal or otherwise. We look at those factors. So how's this plan developed? Like I talked about, there's an inspection process that goes, we go through. This is a standardized process through ASTM. Basically, we're looking for eight common distresses and immediate high severity. And again, these distresses result in a rating for the street, as I said, hundred being best, zero being a failed street. Typically, we perform inspections on the arterials and main streets, collectors, every two years, and the residential streets every four to six years. So we've just done the whole city recently, and we have a fresh snapshot in time, if you will, of what the city looks like current.
That, that's not on. Is that on? Can you hear?
Better?
It should be on.
Hello, hello? Testing, testing. Okay. All right. All right, so I'm talking about the eight common distresses we are looking at. And have some.
Really. No, but I mean, hold the microphone down below.
So as I was talking about, we have these inspections that we perform on the street. So we're looking at these common distresses, alligator cracking, block cracking. I'll show you pictures of those later. The main thing I want to point out here is these inspections are performed in the street. While we did these inspections, we also inspected the handicap ramps on each of the corners. When you perform paving, it triggers by law a need to update the handicap ramps, ramps that are adjacent to those. So we did an inspection for those right now. We don't have a lot of funding to perform those, but we wanted to get a grasp on, you know, what the quantity was and how much we're dealing with. Again, this is another asset, like the roads that we performed condition assessments on. We also did a shadowing, a shadowing of this project with an AI firm. So AI firms are trying to do what the physical inspectors are doing. So they are, you know, using electronic equipment to try to mimic what we have, and they're just shadowing it to try to dial in their equipment and, and get it to be, you know, come up with the same conditions that we are. It's not there yet, but this is something that's in development, and these companies are just shadowing companies like ours to try to dial it in. So we have these eight distresses, common distresses that we look at during these inspections. These are pictures of what they look like. Some of them are load-related, and some of them are weather-related. When it gets hot, the pavement expands and contracts, and they, and they cracks form. And this is a number two. Block cracking is very common with the expansion, contraction of pavement, and that's a weather-related. Alligator cracking, rutting, things like that, such as truckloads. Maybe the road is not sufficiently built in the first place, and it will fail for structural reasons. So some of these are structural, and some of them are more weather and surface-related. And the treatments that you would apply for these different types of things differ. And we'll get to that a little bit later. So with these inspections that we do, we have ratings, as I described, but these are the ranges of the ratings. Four, failed, poor, fair, good, and excellent. And they're about twenty, twenty-point ranges in general. To give you an idea of what those will look like, this is Freedom Boulevard, which was recently reconstructed. This would be in the ninety to one hundred range right now, because it was just recently done. Nice black street, nice fresh asphalt with nice striping. These are fair-conditioned streets. This is Arthur and Ford Street. You can see the pavement is a lot lighter, there's a lot more patching, cracking, and other distresses that are visible in these mid-range streets. Then we have a picture here of a completely failed street. This is Freedom Boulevard before it was reconstructed, and a lot of alligator cracking and just a big mess. So these are the low ranges of the scale. These are all examples right here in your city. If we look at collecting all this data and the results of this, your city has an average PCI right now of sixty-two, which is considered fair. You can see from the pie-shaped graph here that a lot of the streets are in good to fair condition. But it's just the, the poorer ones are really dragging, dragging the average down to sixty-two that we currently have, and that's considered fair condition by this range. And as you can see, that's right in the middle of the scale. So this is how it breaks down by the type of street, the arterials, the main streets that go through town, and the collectors. They account for about thirty-three percent of your system. They range from sixty-five to sixty-seven in PCI. Your local streets are in a little bit poorer condition at an average of fifty-eight, and they make up two-thirds of the system. So there's a lot of work to be done at the local level. We do tend to get more funding and stuff for the arterials, so they, they tend to get more money and get done easier than the local streets. So this is a map showing the current condition based on our assessments. The green and the blue are the good streets, and you can see there's quite a few blue and greens on there. There's also quite a few orange and yellow and red ones. So it's a mixed bag of some good streets, some bad streets, and that's representative of that middle range of PCI. You're right in the, what the PCI is for you, mixed bag of streets, some good, some fair. This is an important slide that I really want to spend some time on. When we talk about rehabilitating and maintaining roadways, there's several different things that go on, several types of treatment that happen. One is preventative maintenance. Preventative maintenance is usually performed on good streets. We're trying to keep them in good streets, so we apply inexpensive treatments to basically seal them. Enemy of the road is water. So any track, any cracks in the road or in the surface, the water will get into the roadway and it will fail prematurely. So if we can apply thin surface treatments and crack seals to prevent the cracks from opening up and prevent the water from getting in there, early and often, we can, we can maintain the roads in a good way. So that's preventative maintenance. This is done on good streets. So it's kind of counterintuitive. People see us doing work on good streets, and they think, why are you doing something on the street? It doesn't make any sense. Well, we're trying to keep it in good condition. On the street that has cracks in it and things, we crack seal it, we slowly seal it, and in about five years, those cracks will reflect through, and we'll kind of be back to where we began. So we've prolonged the life of the street by about five years, and we've pushed it down the curve. So that's what these red ups and downs are here. They're just showing that jump where we prolong in the life of streets that are in good condition. This curve. The black curve there is the life cycle of the pavement. Typically, a road will last about twenty years, and the first fifteen years of it will be fairly steady. Then it goes into a very steep decline as those cracks get exposed, and the water starts getting into the roadway and the subgrade, it starts to fail more quickly. So it's on a very deep part of the curve. Right now, your sixty-two average, you're right at the, starting to go down the steep part of that curve. So things start to fail more quickly. Things at the very bottom, reconstruction, those have no sense of urgency. Those streets are failed. So unlike preventative maintenance, they are not time-dependent. So doing streets in poor condition or failing doesn't help you preserve your streets, right? It doesn't help prevent things from happening. It's only addressing reconstruction. It's very expensive. So a good program should have a combination of rehabilitation, preventative maintenance, rehabilitation, and reconstruction, with the most of the money being spent in rehabilitation and preventative. in rehabilitation and preventative maintenance and very little in actual reconstruction. So what do these treatments look like? I talked about these cracks and these uh surface treatments that are inexpensive. The first one here on the left is crack sealing. Uh where they, you know, self-explanatory, they seal the cracks. Slurry seal, cape seals, chip seals, these are all just treatments very thin. Um and they again seal the road and prolong the life preventative maintenance. And then we get into overlays and reconstruction. So like on Freedom Boulevard, we ground down the roadway and we can reconstructed the whole top asphalt layer. So that's somewhere between rehabilitation and reconstruction. We reconstructed the surface of the in this case. So these are kind of a range of treatments, again widely ranging in cost and and what you apply it to. Some are structural um and some are weather related. Some are preventative. Rehabilitated, let's say. So here's that same graph and the typical treatments that would be done uh in the at the life of that graph. At the very beginning, you'd be doing very light, things like uh crack sealing and chip sealing. Uh you know, slurry seals, the very bottom, you could be doing reconstruction and the maintenance overlays and and various things. We, these are a lot of different treatments here. We typically use cape number two, uh number five and number eight. Is what we typically use. Some of these other things are used, but not that often. I'm going to hand this over to Courtney to talk about this line.
Okay, so one of the things that we wanted to include in this was an equity component because it it seemed like some of the previous paving decisions were just made off request without looking at um equitability throughout the districts throughout the city. So thankfully, the parks uh department had their master plan, so we were able to utilize the same methodology that they used for the parks. And you know, it was interesting because it's like the same data, but a different way of looking at it because you have to use roads to get to parks. So we could look at you know, pavement conditions, the need or demand of the streets, how they were being utilized, the benefit of um you know, prioritizing different streets, accessibility of the streets, and then the functionality. So by utilizing this and having the conversation about our different districts and um looking at the PCI and some of the feedback that we've heard, I was very curious to see how it was going to to shake out. So if you look, um this is the ranking of the districts and and uh you know, Maria, I think back to our ride around in your district and and sure enough, yours ranks as, you know, the the least attention on that area. And I think that's for a variety of reasons. I think, you know, a lot of District Three was annexed in by the county, so they weren't city-designed streets. So there's a lot of different, you know, reasons, and I'm sure there's idiosyncrasies with every single district, but the point is, it wasn't as um equitable. So I think this is a really interesting uh data piece to include when we are doing groupings of uh prioritization of streets. And and part of this, you know, the part of like the uh qualitative aspect of the equity was was this feedback proportion that I'm talking about was bringing it to residents and listening to uh their requests and how requests have been funneled over the years and what ended up getting reconstructed and how and why. So we utilized all of that for uh you know, what we're calling an equity lens for uh for our pavement management plan. I'll pass it back.
And so taking into account, taking into account the equity lens and other factors, uh we developed a six-year plan. In year seven, it starts repeating itself. As I said, we do have prior commitments uh that councils made uh on some streets. So in the first year, we're going to honor, the first couple of years, we're going to have to honor those commitments before we actually, you know, dive into our program. Uh so we're going to do some of those streets. Um we've categorized them um by treatment. Tried to do. So this first year is kind of more of the overlays, the asphalt uh type of streets or preventative maintenance type, sorry. Whereas the second year rehabilitation and overlays and things like that. So again, a mixture of committed streets and then going into the priority districts and year two, uh district three, two. Yeah. And then we're kind of, again, the cities, two-thirds of the city is residential streets. So this plan what we're proposing here is to have a year of where we address the main streets, the arterials, and then a couple of years where we go to the residential streets. So we have, year one is arterials, main streets. Year two is doing rehabilitation in local neighborhoods. Year three is doing preventative maintenance in local neighborhoods. Year four is back to arterials. And then we're going back into the cycle of preventative and rehabilitation in streets. So it kind of goes arterial, locals, locals, arterials, locals, locals, and repeats like that. So this uh that's, yeah, generally the approach we're taking. Um so with this, we looked at several scenarios just to to see the range of of what happens if we had unlimited funds. If we wanted to maintain our PCI at sixty-two and what our current funding level is and if we had unconstrained budgets. So what does that look like if we were to take a peek at that? If we had unconstrained budget, we'd have a, we have a sixty-two now, we could raise up to an eighty-two uh with unlimited funds. We wanted to maintain, and that would take what, ten million dollars a year, eleven million dollars a year, which is a lot of money. Uh just to maintain the sixty-two that we have would require three million dollars a year. Um we have one point six million dollars in our budget. So the budget that we have at sixty-two now, we will decline to somewhere around fifty-five after six years just because there's not enough money in there to get ahead, so to speak. Um so that's kind of a look at. Another way to look at this is in terms of deferred maintenance. Uh we have about twenty-three million dollars that isn't needed to be done today. As time goes on, that cost goes up, of course. If we had unlimited funds, that deferred maintenance would go to zero. If we didn't do anything at all, that deferred maintenance would nearly double. And then you can see the improvement, everything. So basically, we're not maintaining or deferred maintenance is is still there. There's a lot of work to be done because we have somewhat limited budget. So this is that plan in tabular form. You can see that it it jumps uh and the priority districts are three, two, one, and then the year three is districts five, seven, four, and six, and that repeating cycle of arterials and local streets like I described. Uh here's a picture of the the plan that we have right now. Again, this is fluid. Um we tried to group neighbor. We can't go into a neighborhood and just do one street. That's a political nightmare. So we trying to go in and do a whole neighborhood or group the streets in a neighborhood at one time. So in this plan, we're, every year, we're going into different neighborhoods. You can see the yellow is the preventative maintenance aspect, the slurry seals, keeping, do it. These are streets that are in good condition that we're keeping in good condition. And the red streets are the ones that we're rehabilitating or paving, repaving and making somewhat new again. And you can see there's a collection of major streets, arterials and local streets and neighborhoods here. So this is a graphical representation, again, very fluid. If something came up, we're going to do some utility work or something, we could easily shift to another neighborhood. So it's it's very versatile as well. Um so the next steps uh right now with this, we're kind of opening it up for comment. As Courtney said, we're going to come back this winter, so we have all that time to receive additional input from you, the public, whoever wants to comment on this program and plan. And we'll come back in February, we'll present this, the final report. Some of these things might change. We'll seek your approval. And then, as Courtney said, we'll implement that over the next five or six years uh creating construction prob- projects and designing them and planning them. And while we're doing this, we're going to be looking for more money. Like I said, there's funding available usually for the main streets, uh say for us to school. There's all kinds of different funding sources where you can uh get the money to do some of the public streets.
Uh on that last bullet, that continue to seek additional funds and grants, Randall mentioned it before, but one of the things that we did when we were gathering the PCI was looking at all of the curbs and ramps because we have had funding opportunities before for ADA ADA compliance, but we didn't have the data for the grant application. So this will allow us to have that data. So I I foresee us in the future being able to go after more aggressive grants for sidewalk repair because I I can already hear residents, if we're doing all this paving and we're not touching the sidewalks, there's going to be confusion. So the goal is to line up money for us to be able to do the curbs, do the ramps, get us ADA compliant in those areas, many areas that don't even have sidewalks, right? So that's a a big element that we are like planting that seed and investing in our sidewalks as well uh so that we can tie that in with additional funding. So um I he had mentioned it before, but I think it's really powerful when we talk about sidewalks and and how uh contentious that topic can be. So with that, we can open it to questions.
Councilmember Clark?
Uh can you hear me? Okay, perfect. Um so thank you for the presentation. Uh can you go back to the slide that shows the streets uh and their level of degradation, please? Yeah, yes. Um so I'm assuming all of the streets that are not show or that are not colored are private.
That's correct.
Okay. Um there are quite a few private streets within the city that I didn't realize were private. Um can we have a copy of this sent to council, please? Because this would be very wonderful to look at. And also, thank you very much for bringing up the sidewalks because we have yeah, the whole presentation, but ye- yes, and the whole presentation, right? Yeah. Um but yeah, sidewalks. I mean, some of our sidewalks are much worse than our roads, you know, and that's something that seems to not really be talked about often. So thank you very much for mentioning that.
Yeah, absolutely. And I will, I will say, completely separate of this, we are doing a sidewalk inventory also to hopefully align those things for uh more comprehensive sidewalks and streets uh planning. Uh yes, I will be sending the full list of streets to everybody broken down by district with PCI in it and and, you know, allow suitable time for your feedback. Because again, what we showed was proposed. And even if we decide on a proposed six-year plan, if we get grant, if this, if that, like things variables change, we could come back and modify those the plan to reflect either an increase in funding, hopefully not a decrease, but we could, so that plan is very fluid. So even if if and when we do approve and and vote on a plan, that plan is just that. It is a plan and it can change.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much for that presentation. And as a quick little side note, Courtney, uh I would love to see something like this for our water and sewer systems as well, if you haven't already started working on that.
Sounds good to me. Mayor Protem?
Um I really appreciate the fact that you took feedback and took the time to really look at this through the equity lens. I think now we have the information, we need to be able to prioritize where funding needs to be heavily invested. So I appreciate that. Um and of course sidewalks, right? Um that's another conversation. Um but I do have a question. Obviously, it's going to take a couple of years before you touch every road and uh implement parts of this plan. So I'm really wondering whether, one, striping would be ongoing. And two, how would this align with petitions that we receive from residents?
Sure. Uh striping, absolutely ongoing. And as you recall, striping is kind of in two categories. The the, you know, easier, smaller projects, we do in-house, and then the long straight stripes, we we contract that out. We have active contracts with them all the time. And when we do big paving, like when we did Aloney or Freedom, those are included in those construction costs. So those will be ongoing and there's some overlap, but they kind of operate autonomously. Because there's striping that's going on all the time with regard to crosswalks and
Sure.
uh lane lines and things like that. Secondly, uh it doesn't impact that at all, what you're saying, because that's more traffic calming and and specific requests that we get, and those are handled uh separately. One thing I will say is that another component that we didn't include in this, but it's very important. We had GIS very, very involved in this, in that we are intending to build a dashboard so that it is visible to not only you, but all residents. If you hover over it, hover over District Three, District Five, it'll show what's active, what's planned, you know, what's in the queue, so that it is very transparent and very public facing, you know, what's funded by Measure R, Measure D. Um we get those questions all the time and we have the data and and we finally got to a point where we were like, well, how could we just make this more publicly accessible? So if we wanted to have a layer on there for the traffic calming request as well, that's something we could easily add.
Okay, great. Um so I just kind of wanted to put it out there because we are getting petitions and we're getting requests, and I want to make sure those are being addressed as well while we have this plan. Um.
Can I add one more comment?
I have.
Can I add one more comment?
Um for sure.
Uh just talk about the website. Uh this whole thing about preventative maintenance and we're, you know, not doing worst first, that kind of thing, that that education, the website is an opportunity to to post that information and and that would address a lot of their questions. Why are you doing, the street looks perfectly good. Why are you doing that? Well, that would help explain some of that. So this is something we intend to do with the web page, is education, the maps and the program.
Let's see. I had another question and I just um yeah, come back to me. Just went away.
Councilmember Jichu?
Thank you. I have a few questions for you guys. Um one is, how many streets need to be reconstructed altogether in Watsonville? Um the 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 really bad, bad, bad ones, are there? Do we have a list of those? I'm sure you do. Five, I don't even know how many streets we have, five percent of.
We can, we can get you the breakdown. I don't have that off the top of my head, but we can get you the breakdown of the absolute failed streets. But I mean, as you can see, it's it's a little under six percent of the total that failed completely.
Yeah. I I mean, I I'm trying to figure out exactly uh which straits they are. Um but I will tell you the ones that I can see. The red ones, yeah, um seem to be on streets with um uh that that definitely have have a lot of our working class people, working workforce people working, living on them. I don't know how else to say that. So I think that we need to be definitely, when we're talking about equity. Um I'm really surprised on the streets that are not getting attention. So um okay, so I I just want to be walked through this uh I, if I hear this correctly, we spend one point six million dollars a year just on the roads.
So we have budgeted.
Yes, one point six, okay. So if if, tell me where if if I'm wrong on this, we get money from Measure D. We get SB one. We get the gas tax. We get the road fund. Um we get Measure R. And we're only getting one point six million dollars out of all that, those resources?
That's a general fund, I guess that's one.
Why would we be putting that general fund? Why wouldn't, shouldn't that go to the roads? I mean, I I just, I'm, I I just have a hard time. We're only getting one point six million dollars, yet we're pulling, getting money from all these different sources. So um I that's where I'm having a hard time. We go out to the voters, we're like, pass Measure R, we're gonna, you know, fix your roads. But we're already getting a half-cent sales tax for thirty years for Measure D. Um SB one is, you know, has a few more light years left of that. I I just feel like we should be getting more than one.
So they want, the one point six does not include the new allocation of Measure R, so that's in addition. And sometimes there are allocations of um SB one and Measure D that are in addition to that. But those are um usually um allocated per project and we have to apply. So what's great about what Director Limber uh brought to us with this idea of having a payment management plan is really positioning the city to be grant-ready and to know exactly what projects we can go after for additional funding. Such as the next round of uh application for Measure D funding. We we can now really prioritize using this scale that was created, what future projects, and that will be an allocation on top of the one point six. That one point six is our baseline. But we can, we have access to more funding than one point six.
Okay. I'd like to see if you can send it to me. I don't know if any other council members interested. I want, I'd like to see the breakdown of how much money we bring in annually from all of these sources. So I'd like to see the percentage we're actually putting, that that's dedicated to, yeah, right? Because I want to see the exact, this to me sounds really low.
Yeah, we we brought it um. Yeah, we, we brought it, a lot of time we have comprehensive road discussion, we, we brought some of that data, so that data, we have.
But now we have Measure R and it sounds like it's, it's the sales taxes, you know. Maybe it's gone up, we've been spending more. I'd like to see a, 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 a modern version of that.
Hundred percent.
Thanks. And then only other thing is, and, and I brought it up to you before is we put these beautiful roads and then we're spilling paint all over them. Stanford spilled paint all over it. And then I went behind Aloney and there's spilled paint. I'd like if we took a little pride, we're actually painting this, this, the, you know, stop or whatever, needs to be, and not spill paint off our, on our new roads. So we can just do a little bit more attention to those details.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, I want to give compliments to our three council that have already asked some really great questions because I'm going to bring this to the, to the public and let them understand, this is the first time we've seen this. And Courtney, it's great, but it's the first time we've seen it. And I want to give you comprehensive, but I gather, I don't think as well as these guys sometimes. Or as quickly. So thank you. And I, I say this to our city manager, you know, all our, all of our presentations, it would be great to have beforehand so that we can study them and, and really ask them. Because when we're here, we want to support what you're bringing forward. And I think it's a great plan. I think having a management plan, long range and seeing it, I like the equity of it. I'm in District Seven. You know, there's one road there and, but there's other roads in other districts that really need to be looked upon. And as you said, what I'm hearing, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, that, that as and as our city manager said, you know, to be grant-ready, to be ready for any monies that can come our way, that can supplement and that may change, right, the priority of what's going on just because that money came in and it's a spending timeframe. Is that right?
That is right. And, and I'm going to go in order of your comments. That's why this is draft. We would never spring this on and be like, okay, vote, you know, this, you know, we also have the opportunities which we haven't done yet, you know, to do ride-alongs and look at the little specifics in each district. Because that's very important when it comes to managing something and managing your expectations. So we will give adequate time for you to digest this, ask questions, modify as needed before anything gets finalized. So understand that.
Oh, I understand that. I just wanted for us to really give you some good feedback today.
Absolutely, definitely. And as for the, what was your second, the second one?
Eca Fino.
No, we know.
No, I was just talking about, yes, right.
Yes. So it, think of it as a sliding scale, you know, 1.6, with, you look at Aloney. That was a beautiful job, that was 1.2. But then if you look at Freedom and Full Reconstruction, it was way more than that. So if we have the sliding scale of money with a wish list that mirrors that, we're ready to go all the time. So if we had some windfall of money come in, we are ready, prioritized to go with like who's up next. And that's another reason with equity and what Jimmy was just saying about seeing a lot of the red, all, it kind of peppered all over.
It is.
That's why we want to look at very intentional groupings of things, so that we're kind of peppering the attention all throughout the city, whether it's a main corridor road or a dead-end residential street. Everybody gets a shot at this improvement.
Yeah. And I, I do appreciate that. I know when, when improvements come or needed from our the folks who live here and they bring it forward, a lot of that may go away as, as everything starts to look better and everything starts to feel better for not the red, you know, streets, but a lot of the other ones. And so I want to thank you and you're going to send this to us like right today, so we can, I know it's fluid, so it may change. Already sent, fabulous. You guys are passed. And I look forward to it. I do remember having a conversation a long time ago. And maybe this goes to our city manager when she wasn't this, you know, we talked about it years ago, we talked about her website. Which is layers. And I said, why can't we just click, click, you know, because I'm of the mind, if I can think of it, somebody more brilliant has already figured it out and can do it. And so I'm really glad to see that GIS and, and you folks have gotten together. And that's a part of it because I really like adding on to with our infrastructure. Because that's another thing we look for funding for with our, you know, all our waters, distribution. And if we're ready with that, that would make it even better. So thank you for the presentation and we can send you questions?
Absolutely, send questions. I'm happy to compile them all and share them all together, so it's not in a silo, however. However, you want, the whole point of this is to be the utmost of transparency. My goal in a perfect world is you guys no longer have to ask status of things, whether it's utilities, sidewalks, paving, it's available, it's updated, it's live. That's the goal.
And the money issue too. So.
Yeah, that's, it's always going to be an issue.
Well, it is an issue, that's why I said issue. But the more we know, the more that's needed. I see, I saw on here, it went from 3 million to 10 million. I know there's some numbers in between that will help it. And then as, as other things come in. So if, if we're apprised of that, not just on a budget day or budget week, but as things go forward, I think that City Council, all of us would appreciate that. And the needs of, of our city infrastructure is so very important to all of us.
Thank you.
All right, looks like there are no more questions or comments. So thank you very much for the presentation. Very excited to see how this progresses. So we will see you back in the winter. Oh, did you have something, Director? Oh, okay. All right. Well, thank you very much. And with that, we're going to move on to the next part of the agenda, which is item three. If we have any closed session correspondence, it will be in our packet. With that, we're moving to item four. And public comment regarding the closed session agenda will be accepted by us at this time. Do we have anyone from the public who'd like to speak on the closed session item on the agenda? Seeing no one from the public, we'll go ahead and move to closed session and we will resume at 6:30. Thank you very much. Good evening. We are back from our closed session. We're having some technical issues. So please let us know if you can't hear us. So we're on different mics today. Alrighty, and with that, may I have a roll call, please?
Present.
Here.
Here.
Present.
Parker.
Here.
Here.
And Kidos Carter.
Here.
We have Quorum.
All right. Thank you very much. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on to item seven, information items. Reports of dispersment and miscellaneous documents report, item seven A and seven B may be found in the agenda packet. And we are going to move on to item eight, presentation and oral communications. This time is set aside for members of the general public to address the council on any item not on the council agenda, which is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. No action or discussion shall be taken on any item presented, except that any any council member may be, may respond to statements made or questions asked, or may ask questions for clarification. All matters of an administrative nature will be referred to staff. All matters relating to council will be noted in the minutes and may be scheduled for discussion at a future meeting or referred to staff for clarification and report. All speakers are asked to fill out a speaker card and leave it at the podium. Speakers are asked to announce their name and district in which they live in order to obtain an accurate record for the minutes. Alrighty, if anyone from the public would like to speak on an item not on the agenda, this is the time. Please come up to the podium.
All right, we have a public comment here.
I don't want to miss the opportunity to speak about, this week is flood preparedness week. And I just want to make sure that our community is aware that we have opened up our sandbag stations and fire station one. We have a series of, if you follow us on social media, want to make sure that you're following like different strategies to be prepared for flooding. And as the winter is quickly approaching. And in our website, there is an emergency preparedness button that you can go in to it. And as you click that link, there's a lot of information as to how to connect with our 911 reverse system and how to really prepare your household for, in the case of an emergency. So we really want to invite Watsonville residents to pay attention to that important message and, and to be ready for the winter.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else from the public who'd like to speak? All right, I am not seeing anyone from the public, so I'm going to go ahead and move on to council. So I'm going to close out public comment. Going once, going twice. All right, we are moving on to item eight B, oral communications from the council. Would anyone from council like to go first? I'll go. I never go first, so I'll go first. All right, so I just want to, first off, thank you for coming tonight. We're having, as I said, we're having some technical difficulties. And I want to apologize, I was a little bit less available in September than I normally am. I was sick, I had a cold, which turned into a sinus infection, which turned into pneumonia, which turned to another sinus infection. So I was very sick for about a month. And I missed a lot of events that I really wanted to go to, so my apologies. I did manage to go to a few things as I started feeling better. I attended the celebration of organic agriculture in Santa Cruz on the 23rd of September. I attended the Food What Benefit at UCSC on September 29th. On October 12th, I attended the Filipino Festival right here in the plaza. It was amazing. There was really cool dancing and delicious lumpias. And that same day, I also attended senior prom. It looked like everyone was having a really fun time. It was, it was really, really nice. So thanks for staff for putting that on. Last week, I attended the League of, League of Cities, League of Cities Conference, where we actually, City of Watsonville, we won the Helen Putnam Award for Excellence for our Watsonville Opportunity to Work Program, which is a program where young adults get job training, job skills. And then after that program, we actually had over a dozen young adults that were hired by the city. So it was a really great program. We were chosen as one of 10 cities winners from about 200 participants. So it was a really, really great thing to be honored for that. And so thank you so much to the staff that put that on. And I think that is it. I tried to get everything in. Looks like I did it. I don't know if we have a video, if we're able to play that video, because I wanted to play it for everyone to highlight our program. Are we able to show the video?
Yes, Mayor, we're going to combine images through our visual system and I'm going to give audio through my cell phone.
All right, excellent. So we do have that video and then we'll go back to comments from council.
Many young adults in Watsonville struggle to find employment due to limited experience and training. So the city tapped into American Rescue Plan Act funding to relaunch their Opportunity to Work Program, a six-month paid training initiative. Program provides young adults with valuable skills, training, and hands-on job experience in the workplace. Thanks to the program, the city has hired over a dozen participants. Watsonville's opportunity to work program strengthens the local workforce, benefiting both the city and the community.
All right. Very awesome. Awesome work to all our participants and all our staff. And Councilmember Dutra.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I also joined the mayor as well as Councilmember Arasco and Councilmember Montesino in Long Beach this past week. And we were able to sit on so many programs to, you know, talk about our economy and, you know, what we can do in our cities to help improve our economic development and because everything that, that makes cities function. And so it's always great to be on the cutting edge when it comes to issues that are facing communities. So it's all, it's always great to go and, and be there. And also, we received the award, like the mayor said, so congratulations to the city staff for making that happen to be recognized on a state level. That's, that's quite something. So congrats to the city of Watsonville. I also wanted to thank, and I think she, and she's gone by now, but you want to say thank you to Suzie, Maryam, who did a great job for us over the many years of working here for the city of Watsonville. And so I want to say, you know, publicly, thank you, Suzie. Your infectious laugh and giddiness will be missed. So. And just this coming up, I'm going to be participating in the Watsonville Megan New Bunko this, this Friday. It's a fundraiser, it's a, it's a, a women's group here in Watsonville. They raise funds for local, local profit nonprofits and they help fund a lot of issues that are facing women here in our community. So I think they have tickets left if people want to participate in it. Also, Happy Halloween, have a safe Halloween, everybody out there. I think there's some opportunities for some trunk or treats out there. I'm, I'm sure you can look at our website, you can find where you can take the kids to go trick or treat. And don't forget to vote on Tuesday, November 5th, because I don't think we have a meeting before then. So exercise that right that so many people fought for in our country to have. So thank you, everybody.
Right on time. Thank you. All right. Anyone else from council? Mayor Prostam, Orozco?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome, everyone. Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. I've had several different meetings with just different community members on different topics the past couple of weeks. I also got the opportunity to continue to meet with PV USG, our local school district, to continue conversation around open space, save routes to schools and other areas of possible collaboration. I also attended the League of Cities Conference last week and I do want to acknowledge the team on a job well done. And the Opportunity to Work Program. So thank you so much for your work.
Councilmember Clark?
Yes. So I unfortunately was not able to make it to our senior prom, even though I was really looking forward to it. I'm glad to hear that it was a success. I ended up working the farm tour instead. Excuse me. I also attended the annual Farm Bureau Farm Dinner. I was able to attend Zoe Loffgren's annual barbecue with Councilmember Parker over the weekend, which was a wonderful event to see a lot of people at. Did a ride along with our Public Works Director, Lindberg, which is always fun. She took me around town, gave me some updates on some of the things that are coming up. And speaking of that, I want to talk about a District Five meeting that is going to be in December. We don't have the date, it's going to be within the first week, but once we have the date, everything will go out on social media and there will be this being mailed out to people as well. We're going to be specifically talking about roadways and intersections, especially the intersection of Main Street and Auto Center. I want a lot of input from the public and the business owners in that area before we do anything to that intersection. It is a mess. And I would like to have as much input from the community before we touch that. Also, I don't want to throw her under the bus or anything like that, but we're also going to be talking about the Clifford and Pennsylvania Corridors, so which border District Five and District Four for Councilmember Salcedo. So maybe we could get some input from District Four as well, since. So maybe we could get some input from District 4 as well, since it's the dividing line. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from council? All right, council, all right, seeing no one else from council, I'm going to move to item 8C, or report out a closed session.
Good evening. A closed session was held on the item on the agenda and no reportable action was taken.
Thank you very much. All right, with that, we're going to move to some proclamations. And I believe we're starting with fruition. Do we have anyone from fruition here to accept that? All right, great, come on up, I will meet you at the podium. All right, so I wanted to give fruition a proclamation because you are so friendly to the LGBTQIA+ community. It's really a community space, a fun place to be, very welcoming. So I just wanted to say thank you. So here you are. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. We're happy to, you know, accept this award. And want to take the opportunity to invite everyone to come out on Thursday. We're doing a fundraiser for United Way and their youth programs. We're donating a portion of proceeds in the evening. See y'all soon.
Thank you very much. All right, I think the next proclamation that I have, I believe, is for Claudio Franca Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu. And I see y'all in the audience, so come on up. So I have gone to a couple of classes, I've dropped in. And I have found it to be a really welcoming space, just really strong sense of community, people wanting to help each other out. And just really what Watsonville embodies. So I wanted to say thank you for having that space and building that community. So thank you so much. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you so much for this recognition. I just want to say. We opened up the school in 2011 and continue to grow for the community with the same desire to reach out to the community, to the youth. On top of that, this is, we have four schools for Claudio Franca. Our headquarters is in Santa Cruz, then we have one in San Jose, we have Watsonville, and we just opened one in Scotts Valley. At the same time, Master Claudio, he's a Coral Belt. And Coral Belt, basically, you have to achieve after 31 years of being a Black Belt. So, and when he received his Black Belt, he was 26. And then, so you had that time, so there's very few Coral Belts in the surrounding area. So he's, he's known worldwide. So it's, it's a pleasure for me to be a Black Belt under Master Claudio at the same time. And the way that he grows his business and inspires the community. And back in 1995, but 96, he started a tournament, the US Open, to bring in the community for competition. And this year, November 16th and 17th, he'll be doing this 29th Annual US Open Tournament in San Jose. It grew out of the area, so now we had to go to bigger venues. But yeah, if anybody's interested, could go to our website, you'll see that US Open will be going on. You'll see lots, hundreds, maybe 2,000 competitors. And the kids will be all one day. It's, it's really enjoyable to watch the kids. So thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, belief did have another proclamation, but they could not make it this evening. So we're going to postpone that to our next meeting and move forward on our agenda. Yes, yes, please.
I just want to say. For those who haven't had a chance to go fruition, not only do they have wonderful beers and everything else, but they make a killer grilled cheese. That, I mean, if I could live on it, I would live on it. You know, not healthy for me to every day have it, but oh my God, it's so good. So I want to thank you for improving our neighborhood where I live and improving, you know, the sociability factor for everybody there. And, and for having that grilled cheese. I just can't tell you how much we all appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Parker, and I concur. All right, so moving forward, do we have any other comments from council? No? Okay, so moving forward, like I said, we are going to hold off on item 8F for our next thing when the recipient can be here. So we're moving on to item 8G, which is a presentation by Paco Estrada, former mayor, Paco Estrada. Regarding Friends of Watsonville Parks and Community Services Buy a Brick Campaign. Take it away.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Nice to see you again. My name is Francisco Paco Estrada. And I'm here representing the nonprofit Friends of Watsonville Parks and Community Services. And I'm here with another board member, my good friend, Tony. Tony, you want to introduce yourself?
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Tony Camargo, part of the board for Friends of Watson Parks and Community Service. Tony and Paco, our celebrity couple's name would be Taco, just so you guys know. There's a little icebreaker.
Just to make a quick note that the Mayor Protemp is also a member of our nonprofit, and she's one of the founders. So we want to thank her for all her great work that she's done over the years to support the nonprofit. So Tony, you want to tell people about the nonprofit a little bit? Next slide?
So yeah, so the Friends, we're a nonprofit organization dedicated to promoting the health and the well-being of our community through support of enhanced parks and rec cultural and educational programs administered by the Parks and Community Service Department of the City of Watsonville. You may, you may know us from maybe cosplay at Nerdville, making laundry some awesome leader, the Sessa Chivas Awards, and then getting some fun strawberry socks at the Strawberry Jam.
Next slide. And today, we were taking on a whole new endeavor, a new campaign. And it's the Buy a Brick fundraising drive. And it's to help with the renovation and the renaissance of Ramsey Park. We want to thank the city and its leaders for all the support and all the funding that they were able to get for Ramsey Park. It's currently being remodeled, as you've all seen. And this is an opportunity for the entire community to leave something, a legacy, something that means something to them at the park that has brought us so much joy, so many memories. Growing up, I played soccer on this field. When it's whole, when it's one giant field, nobody can beat Watsonville teams on that field. It's like there's this aura, there's this sort of spirit that fills soccer players. And it gives us just so much pride to be able to play games in our home field and to win and to represent the community. So, you know, I have a lot of love for, for our park.
Yeah, and just to add, what a great opportunity we're in right now. Ramsey Park was built in 1973. I believe this version is as of 1991. So 91, our generation really got to enjoy it. We got to, you know, we all got burned by that giant metal slide. And I got the opportunity to, you know, make sure my kids got some, some burn marks as well. So yeah, just a great opportunity. This is probably not going to happen, you know, for a while. So again, great opportunity.
Next slide. And so just a few things to remember about the bricks. As you can see on the map, we have some designated areas where the bricks will go. That includes the playground being rebuilt and the dog park as well. So any of those areas you see on there is a potential area where your brick or bricks could go. The bricks are 6 by 12 inches. We meant to bring one, but they're in storage. But they're a good size, as you can sort of see here. They're $250 for residents. And as we mentioned, you know, they can be for a number of reasons, right? You could honor a friend, honor a family member, I could honor my childhood soccer team that played on that field. You know, there's just so many things that we could do to really honor the, the park, the community, and, and people here in the community.
So yeah, so bricks will be available for purchase even after the park reopens in 2025. Same price, $250. And then bricks will receive just regular maintenance. So yeah, so kickoff party, Sunday, December 8th, 4 to 6, at Watsonville Public House. We're going to have a kickoff party for our, for our brick, so a bit of a brick house.
Yeah, that's so hilarious. Yeah, we're actually having a brick party. So it'll be at the public house. And we invite each of you council members to please join us that day if you can. Bring people that may be interested in honoring somebody or something at this amazing park, at this facility that we have. And it's Sunday, December 8th, 4 to 6. And you can find more information at our campaign website, www.friendsofwatsonvillepcs.org. You can also talk to the Parks Director, Nick, who can answer any questions that you may have. And we're here to answer any questions that you may have right now. So feel free to ask any questions. If not, we hope to see you on Sunday and bring people. It's going to be a fun brick party.
Councilmember Parker?
I'm on. So thank you for being here and thanks for doing this, because I know when we did the groundbreaking and I was so interested, I was over there thinking, what a great idea. I didn't necessarily get burned on the metal, but I got scrapes and not quite a broken arm off, off the locomotive. So, but had a great time growing up there. If people wanted to buy this without attending that, or if they couldn't attend it, is there, do they go to the website? What would they do?
Yeah, there's a link on the website to purchase the brick now.
Okay, and how many lines can you have?
So it's, yeah, three lines.
Three lines.
Yeah, three lines, and I believe each line could have up to, let's see here. Was, I think it was a.
Yeah, we do allow for, I think, up to 20 characters on the bricks, three lines. But we don't allow, like, you know, naughty words or naughty messages to be on there forever. You know, so we'll, we'll do a good job of, you know, checking everything out, making sure it makes sense, and then we can approve.
Okay, and, and do you give a discount if somebody's going to go crazy and do it for their great grandparents, grandparents, brothers, sisters? You know, is there any, or is it 250 a pop?
No, I think it's 250, 250 a pop. But I don't know, these are things that I think we could still discuss as a nonprofit. And but come December 8th, we'll, we'll have more details, everything will be finalized, and people will know exactly what they're getting for their $250.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Montesino, sorry, Mayor. Old habits.
Councilmember, Councilmember Montesino.
Yeah, you put that slide where it's bigger, where the bricks are going to go? Yeah, are you going to be able to request, like, where, where you put your bricks?
So I think we will do our absolute best to try to place it where people request. But it's not a guarantee, because we may get like multiple requests, and we'll have to figure out a system of like, okay, if we have no more space here, what are we going to do? What are we going to prioritize? The great thing is that even if we sold, if we sold every brick and every brick was filled in these spots, we'll find more spaces to open up to continue to add more bricks.
And where's my statue?
The statue? That's our next project, Eduardo, but we're not the bricks, but yeah, good question.
Any other questions from council? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, Paco. We will see you soon, hopefully on December 8th.
Thank you, council.
Thank you very much. All right, we are moving on to item 8H. Before we do, we're keeping that slide. Do not fear, it's, we'll still be there. We fought very hard to keep that slide. All right, item H8, update on the CARE Act implementation by Nicole Coburn. Assistant County Administrative Officer. Come on up and welcome.
Good evening, council members and mayor. It's a pleasure to be here. My name's Nicole Coburn. I am one of the two Assistant County Administrative Officers for Santa Cruz County. I'm joined this evening by Sven Stafford, who's a principal analyst in our office, as well as other department members who are part of a collaboration. I have Caitlin Becker from the Public Defender's Office and Megan Morevich from the County Council's Office. Other members of our team who are not here include Behavioral Health, and Sven will be filling in for their slides. So we wanted to come and give you an update on CARE Act implementation for the county. We've been working really diligently over the past year to implement CARE Act. We are part of the Cohort Two Counties implementing on December 1st of this calendar year. So we're here to talk to you about what we have lined up for implementation and to answer your questions. And I'm going to turn it over to Megan to start us off with the County Council slides.
Good evening. So the Community Assistance and Recovery and Empowerment Act, or the CARE Act, is based on evidence that shows that people can achieve stability in less restrictive community-based treatment programs. The CARE Act allows for eligible individuals who have untreated schizophrenia or other psychotic disorders to receive treatment and other resources in a court-m monitored process. Implementation in Santa Cruz County will begin on December 1st. Here, I'd like to make a few key points. First, the CARE Act is distinguishable from conservatorships, and that is a, it is 100% voluntary process. Participants have to be willing to engage. Second, housing is not a guarantee for all participants. Behavioral Health will be talking more about housing resources later in the presentation. And third, the CARE Act is only available for eligible individuals with specific psychotic disorder diagnosis. So this slide goes over the roles of everybody who's involved in the CARE Act process. So the first is the participant or the respondent. So the respondent is a legal term that's used to refer to the person who's receiving, the recipient of services through the care process. And the second is the petitioner. So the petitioner is the person who refers someone to the care process. That could be County Behavioral Health, or it could be someone else. There is the Santa Cruz County Behavioral Health Agency that's an important partner here. That's the agency responsible for coordinating and providing services to the participant or the respondent. And there's communities and service providers, county, as well as community-based organizations that are providing housing and other supportive services to participants in this process. And then there are the court partners, which is County Council, Megan, who you've heard from already. The Public Defender's Office represents the participants in the care process and the court and staff. So the court partners also include the judge, who is the neutral arbiter of this process, as well as the staff through the courts. The next slide will go through the, kind of introduce you to what happens for the person who is the recipient of the services here. So the respondent, again, is that legal term referring to the person receiving services through the care process. And this summarizes the eligibility criteria in more detail. And at the end of the presentation, you'll see there's a link to take a look at this, this whole slideshow, so you can look at this in more detail. But it's gonna be an adult who is 18 years or older with a diagnosis of schizophrenia spectrum or other psychotic disorders, who have symptoms that are severe in degree and persistent in duration, which may cause behavioral functioning, which interferes substantially with primary activities of daily life. And that may result in an inability to either maintain stable adjustment and independent functioning without treatment or support for a long or indefinite period of time, who are not stabilized with ongoing voluntary outpatient treatment and are either unlikely to survive safely or independently in the community, or their condition is deteriorating significantly without intervention. Participation in the CARE Act is the least restrictive alternative, and so it's an alternative to other avenues such as LPS or incarceration. And the person, again, needs to be interested and open in participating.
All right, good evening, council members. So as Caitlin just went over, CARE Act eligibility is very constrained. It's eligible for folks with schizophrenia spectrum disorders, some related other psychotic disorders. And then on the far right, you can see the diagnoses that on their own don't meet eligibility. This could be a psychotic disorder due to a general medical condition. Doesn't include bipolar disorder, and it doesn't include on its own substance-related disorders. And so just a substance use disorder on its own does not make you eligible for CARE Act services. As we've gone through our county data and looked at potential eligible population, we found that about, we think about 30, 30 to 35 people will be served through this program annually. Next slide. And so how do folks get into CARE Act? The, this is the responsibility of the petitioner. One of the key differences in CARE Act from conservatorship or other behavioral services is that the role of a petitioner is much broader than in other, in other legal proceedings. So a person can nominate them, can petition for themselves. Family members can petition, so parents, spouses, siblings, children or grandparents. Mental health professionals, including the mental health liaisons that are embedded with your city police department, would be able to petition. Hospitals are able to petition. The County Behavioral Health Agency, first responders, so EMTs, firefighters, homeless outreach workers, and then roommates, or, as I said, the client or respondent themselves. So there's a pretty broad spectrum of people that are able to make a petition to determine if someone is eligible for CARE Act services. And so the role of County Behavioral Health, once someone is determined to be eligible for CARE Act services, is that County Behavioral Health gets assigned to engage with that respondent as they enter into different pathways and potentially a care agreement. The purpose of CARE Act and engaging with Behavioral Health is to find pathways for people to enter services and get the treatment that they need. It could be that that happens through CARE Act. It could be that Behavioral Health is able to engage those clients in other ways and other services that are less restricted, even less restrictive than a CARE Act agreement. And so those are options that Behavioral Health will look at. Behavioral Health will create an initial report or clinical evaluation that does get returned to the court. And then care participants will all be assigned coordinator to ensure that if they are participating in CARE Act services, that there's someone to help them through that process and navigate the various systems that they'll be touching. And so who are the other people that we're coordinating and trying to align services with? There are a lot of behavioral health and service providers that help us with, with different types of mental health and substance use services. The housing piece isn't guaranteed, but there is new housing coming online specifically where CARE Act respondents do have priority. So at the bottom bullet, you'll see the Behavioral Health Bridge Pousing Project. This is a project that's gonna bring 30-plus beds to the Harbor Vet Building, which is in Live Oak on the corner of SoCal Drive and Capitola Road. There will be 34 new units there, probably coming online summer of 2025. And there will be supportive services there to help clients both enroll in services and transition to more permanent, hopefully, stable housing. And as I said, CARE Act clients will have some priority in being able to get into, get into those units.
As Sven mentioned earlier, first responders and may, in some circumstances, may be petitioners in CARE Act proceedings. First responders, including police officers, firefighters, paramedics, who have repeated interactions with a potential participant, may file a petition. All petitioners, including first responders, will be substituted out after the initial hearing by Behavioral Health. And Behavioral Health will be the petitioner for the remainder of the proceedings. First responders may also make referrals to Behavioral Health or other mental health service providers. First responder agencies are encouraged to identify an individual within their organization, if they don't have one already, to be a liaison to support communications and referrals to Behavioral Health. Before filing a CARE Act petition, consider reaching out to Behavioral Health for assistance in determining whether or not the potential participant meets criteria. At that point, Behavioral Health can help identify whether that individual is well-suited for care, or if they can be referred to other services, if they're not potentially ineligible. Care petitioners must include documentation of a qualifying psychiatric condition or an affidavit of a behavioral health clinician, excuse me, and an affidavit of a behavioral health clinician, or proof of two recent psychiatric hospitalizations. Now I'll walk you through briefly the care process. Once a petition is filed, the judge will make a determination as to whether eligibility has been met. Then the public defender is appointed to represent the respondent. And the, if the Behavioral Health is not the initial petitioner, it will be referred to Behavioral Health to do an initial investigation. If the respondent is engaged and interested in the care process, the parties will work together to create a care agreement, which includes court-ordered services. Then the court will hold periodic review hearings to track the participant's progress. And after 12 months, the participant may graduate from care. Each participant will have an individualized care agreement or plan to meet their specific needs. Both the participant and Behavioral Health will be expected to comply with the expectations of the care agreement. It's not simply a list of demands that the participant has to follow, includes services that they have a right to receive. The agreement may include Behavioral Health Services, medication services, housing resources, or supports. Though services are always subject to available funding.
So our representative from the court couldn't be here tonight, but I wanted to cover some of the resources that the court has available. They already have forms and resources at both the Santa Cruz County Library in Santa Cruz, as well as the self-help here at the Santa Cruz Superior Court in Watsonville. There are people in both locations who can answer questions, provide support in completing documents. They're available for both, meeting with people who need assistance in person and remotely. And their websites are listed here, as well as their phone numbers. As I just mentioned, there are locations, the two locations that people can visit to get information and to get assistance with completing forms. They will be referring people to Behavioral Health to, for assistance as well, to help. And Behavioral Health will follow up and try to determine if there's a match. So I know it's already been mentioned, but there are a follow, the, a number of partners, the court partners here are the judge, who, as we've mentioned, is supposed to serve as a neutral arbiter. They're supposed to conduct the proceedings in an informal, non-adversary adversarial way. We're trying to really reach the clients where they're at. So we're hoping that we can provide an environment where the clients are comfortable and are really making progress in meeting their goals and objectives and their care court agreement and plan. County Council, as we've mentioned, is the attorney for Behavioral Health, and they will be advising Behavioral Health on all of the forms and petitions that are filed. And public defender is the attorney representing the care court client through, with all of their interests and rights. So the state has a number of resources available online as well. There's a website and various resources listed here. You can visit the county's website page, which is santa cruz county ca.gov/care. We also have an email address set up for folks who have questions, and we can help connect them to the right resource. We're happy to answer any questions you have. I believe that's the last slide, and thank you for having us tonight.
Thank you very much. Do you have any questions from council? Councilmember Salcedo?
Thank you so much for your presentation. It's nice to see you all. I just wanted to follow up on the element in the criminal court section. We didn't really talk about how this is a form of diversion. So can you please explain how, if someone meets criteria, what impact that could have on their criminal case?
Sort of. I can sort of answer that question. So yeah, so the Public Defender's Office will represent anybody who is a participant in the care proceedings. Of course, it's a civil proceeding and it's confidential. And so there are certainly things that we're trying to work out in terms of how exactly that would, that would happen if a person is both charged criminally and participating in the care, in a care proceeding. I will say that the whole kind of effort here is to make sure that as much as we can, we are engaging people where they are. And there are so many diversion opportunities too, that are kind of coming from that same perspective. So this might be an avenue where somebody might be able to get more support that they might need in order to effectively get through a period of diversion or have their criminal cases diverted through mental health diversion.
And the way I look at 1338, it looks like there is a diversion aspect to this completely. Is that accurate, that criminal cases could be diverted if they complete this 12- or 24-month programming? Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, and I think that's something that we're, we're gonna kind of see how that, how we'll be able to use that once it's, okay, once we're underway.
And I know you're not a lawyer yet. It sounds like it's gonna be a very small caseload. But the way the statutes are written, this could be any felony essentially, except for very enumerated listed ones under diversion. Is that accurate? Like what would qualify for their crim, for the actual criminal allegation? For example, I know murder is exempt, rape is exempt. But are there other crimes that could be considered, like any other type of felony?
See, I want to just distinguish that the care process is a completely civil matter. So there won't be coordination and communication between the civil court and the criminal court in the way that criminal diversion is. There is a separate criminal diversion program.
Right.
So. I hope, I hope that answers your question.
Sure, so they're gonna be separate processes.
Completely separate.
Okay, so there could be like mental health diversion, and then there could be, that's a criminal term, and then there's gonna be cares diversion.
Precisely. So there is a person who has a criminal case that will proceed, and there may be, that person may also be participating in the care process, but they are completely separate. Care is a civil, a civil proceeding, and there may be some coordination. There may be some opportunities for that. But the, you know, this is gonna hopefully help people who are maybe really struggling and need some additional support in order to stabilize, that they then could potentially use that experience to pursue diversion in the criminal case.
Or successfully complete their diversion.
Successfully complete diversion, but it's completely.
Awesome, thank you. That does answer my question.
And I'm a social worker, not a lawyer, so. Thanks, Chris. Thanks, Councilmember Salcedo.
There are questions, comments from council? Nope. Councilmember Clark?
I was just out of curiosity. So you state that someone has to be diagnosed, but I'm assuming a lot of the population that you deal with probably don't have their medical records readily available. So what do you do with somebody who is undiagnosed or you cannot prove that?
Sure, so the petitioner, in some cases, may not, may not have the supporting affidavit, which has the diagnostic criteria. Or potential, or they may not be able to provide the evidence of two recent psychiatric hospitalizations. The, it's our information that the clerk's office at the court is going to, is not gonna reject any petitions. All petitions will be accepted for filing. The judge will then make a determination if it meets eligibility. There may also be coordination between the court clerk's office and Behavioral Health for referrals to help potential petitioners find the resources to help find the evidence to support their petitions, if they don't have enough for initial filings.
Okay, so the qualifiers are like an automatic end, but there is also a gray area where people, if they really do need that help, they can get it even though they don't have all the supporting documentation.
Absolutely, and there's been meetings between the court and Behavioral Health on how to coordinate for those referrals and supports for petitioners.
And then there was a statement made where you said it was gonna help 30 to 35 people, serve them annually. Are we talking just in Watsonville or countywide?
Yeah, we think countywide.
That low of a number?
Based on experience from the pilot counties. There are seven, seven pilot counties that have been operating CARE Act services for the past 12 to 14 months. And based on their experience, that's what we're seeing.
Do you know what the largest pilot county is?
Well, Los Angeles County has been.
Oh, and they're doing like 30 to 35 people a year?
Well, no, proportionately, they're doing, I mean, they're doing a lot more, but it's still, they're still in the hundreds. And so if you think of their 12 million people versus our 275,000.
So that's an average?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why I was like, whoa, that's a really low number. So, okay, awesome. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from council? All right, well, thank you very much for that presentation. City Manager Vivas and I were in a meeting this morning, and they asked us, do you know about the CARE Act? And we said, we will tonight. So thank you. Now we are knowledgeable. Thank you very much. All righty. Moving forward, we are now on item nine, our consent agenda. All items appearing on the consent agenda are recommended actions that are considered to be routine and will be acted upon as one motion. Any items removed will be considered immediately after the motion. The mayor, that's me, will allow public input prior to the approval of the consent agenda. Would anyone from the public like to speak on the consent agenda? Please come up to the podium. Welcome.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and city council members. My name is Nick Boll, the Recreation Supervisor with Watsonville Parks and Community Services, joined by.
Celeste Carrillo, I'm the Young Adult Opery and at the Watsonville Public Library. Nice to see you all tonight.
And item nine I is introduction of our Watsonville Teen Action Council and appointment of two of our members to the Parks and Recreation Commission and the Library Board of Trustees. But we wanted to take a moment to invite all of our Teen Action Council members to introduce themselves to you all. So with that, I'm going to go over your, you want to say your name and your positions?
Good, good evening. My name is Camila and I am the secretary.
Hello. My name is Alexandra and I am the treasurer.
Hi, my name is Isabella. I'm the Parks and Rights Commissioner.
Good evening. I'm Christina Nolasco. I'm the marketing chair.
I'm Naya Brunelli and I'm the Community Development.
Good evening. My name is Anai Hakoa and I am the Activities Chair.
Hi, I'm Joseph Magania and I'm the Hovenasano's Ambassador.
And then also not present, but on our Teen Action Council, we have Izzy, who's our chair, Sophia, who's our chair, Daniela, who's our Library Board of Trustees rep, and Eva Buenos, who is our Aptos High Ambassador. We look forward to partnering with you on, you on the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your service. Would anyone else from the public like to speak on the consent agenda? All right. Seeing no other public comments on consent, I'm going to bring it back to council.
A move for approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
All second.
We have a motion and a second.
Mayor. Before you call the vote, I am related to Daniela Hernandez. She's my beautiful goddaughter. And she's being appointed tonight to the Library Board, item nine L. So to avoid the appearance of bias, I'm going to recuse from that item and would like to ask the mayor to call that item separately from the remainder of the consent calendar.
All right.
No. But I'm sure she's watching from home.
So we can go ahead and pull item nine L since we have a recusal. All right. Any, any other items that we'd like to pull council? All right. We have a motion and a second and we'll be voting on items nine, nine B through, no, A through K. All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor, just for a point of clarification on the motion, would the maker and the seconder agree to that?
Yes.
Thank you. Clark?
Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Fodosco?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Salsido?
Aye.
Kidos Carter?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. Excellent. So we will move on to item 10, which is item nine L. The item that was removed from consent.
I make a motion to accept.
A second. I did it. We have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Clark?
Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Salsido?
Aye.
And Kidos Carter?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving on, we are on item 11, reports to council. And this is one I'm very, very excited to hear about. Item 11A, Watsonville Civic Center Library Rooftop Edition Project Update by Matthew Evans, architect at the KPA Group. Welcome.
Good evening, council. Alicia Martinez, Library Director with Matthew Evans here from the KPA Architects.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. I'm happy to be here tonight. Again, my name is Matthew Evans at the KPA Group. And today we're going to talk to you guys about the Civic Center Rooftop Edition Project at the Watsonville, at, at the Watsonville Public Library. Thank you. Okay. So starting with a little agenda of the presentation, we would like to make an introduction of the project, show a plan view rendering, show some additional renderings, highlight elements of green design that relate to the Watsonville Green Building Program. Show us a snippet of our 65% design documents and then review the project schedule and the project cost estimate. So as an introduction, our site is actually on the opposite side of this building facing Main Street. At the second level, there's an existing unfinished rooftop deck that has the ability to be built upon and constructed upon. And the project is related to building an outdoor patio at the Civic Center Library that can be accessed from the second deck and provide, second floor and provide a, a lot of opportunity for the community in terms of a presentation and general, you know, recreation. Okay. So here is the rendering of the plan view of the design at this point. The elements that we'd like to highlight include an outdoor presentation screen as well as a multifunctional space that can be used for presentation seating or other events. We have community planter gardens adjacent to the library side that can be maintained and utilized by the community to plant different items. We also have a area dedicated for children as well as a cafe pavilion for beverage service and light prep space for the presentation area. We have designated seating facing the street side of the plaza here. And that seating is, also, you know, can, can support the cafe pavilion and, and those needs. We also have irrigated planters and landscaping facing Main Street to kind of wrap out the project here. One other addition is the new entrance that we're implementing from the meeting room. So there's an existing meeting room that the library staff uses. And there's currently no direct access from that room out to the deck area. And part of this project involves creating a door so the deck can be directly accessed from that space. Okay. So here's a rendering kind of from that new, new access from the meeting room area. And what you're seeing here is a view of the presentation seating along with the, some of the lighting elements in the project. We like to highlight here the commercial festoon string lighting. And this adds kind of a fun element during evening hours. You can see here the cafe pavilion in the background that is used to serve beverages and as a light preparation space. And kind of in the foreground of the image over on the left side, you see those community planters. And these are the planters that will allow us, you allow, the, the community will be responsible for maintaining these planters. And the, the LED lighting on the columns, that is multi-color LED lighting and will have full control, full RGB capability to display any color or pattern of colors that the library wishes. So here we're at the street side of the cafe pavilion. And you can see some of the lighting elements in a little bit more detail here. So we have those LED lights, the, that are multi-color at the columns as well as some pendant lights to kind of brighten up the space. And then you see the colorful panels that are on the side of the cafe pavilion. Those are phenolic resin panels. They're available in myriad of different color and finish options. We're, we're going with a theme here to kind of match the existing theme of the library. And the neat thing about these panels is that they're really easy to maintain. They're really robust and, and high strength. And if you do need to replace one, you can just go ahead and replace that one singular panel without affecting the rest of the construction. And at the front here, we see some of the landscaping in the, the plantings that we're having at the, the planters facing Main Street, which I'll go into a little bit more in another slide, as well as a close-up of the designated seating areas. So here at the other side of the cafe pavilion, this is the side closest to the existing library space. Now, we'd like to highlight that the, the pavilion itself is open on both sides with natural ventilation. And this allows, you know, direct access to the pavilion from, paid, by patrons, wherever they might be out on the rooftop deck. We can also see here in the, in the background, the presentation screen that is part of the presentation space. And this screen can be utilized for a lot of different functions, whether it be large meetings, community movie events, fitness classes and similar, similar events like that. The new entrance from the meeting room allows direct access for staff and also kind of a, a nice visibility angle from that interior location of the building as well. Here, we're back at the presentation screen looking towards the cafe pavilion. And we'd like to highlight here the theme for the plantings that we've selected. So we're going with kind of a green, purple and white theme. And that, you know, highlights the, the space and is actually easy to maintain those, the plants that we have selected are relatively low water use. And again, that side will be irrigated with drip irrigation. And then we have the movable seats in the multifunctional presentation space. So these can be arranged as such for a presentation or relocated for a different type of function or completely removed and stored within the library if the space is desired to be opened up for that particular event. So here we'd like to highlight some of the elements from the Green Building Program that this project will incorporate. So we have low emitting materials, including, including adhesives and sealants and paint. The irrigation system for the plantings along Main Street is high efficiency drip irrigation. The deck is accessible. There'll be locations around the plaza, there already are for recycles, recyclables collection. There is a significant amount of daylight at this space and the, the daylight also helps to not wash out the space in most of the, you know, the heavy use times. We did multiple sun studies on space and the afternoon is fairly well shaded from the bright light throughout the, most of the year. We have the natural ventilation at the cafe pavilion, which I previously mentioned. And we are adjacent to the existing parking garage. So those are some of the sustainability elements that we're looking to implement. And here are some snapshots of our 65% design documents. So this project involves a lot of engineering expertise, mostly from the structural perspective, but also from the electrical perspective. There's also architectural drawings, you know, demolition plans, floor plans, architectural details, landscaping plans, as well as mechanical and plumbing drawings. Okay. So going into the project schedule, KPA has been working with the city and the library since late 2023 on a concept report for this project. The concept phase was completed in March and the actual design of the project kicked off late May. The 30% schematic design submittal was mid-August, August 15th. And just earlier this month, we've submitted the 65% design development set. In mid to late December, we will be submitting the permit review set. That'd be 100% construction documents. And after that, the, the project will go through building permit review and hopefully we'll be able to start the bidding process shortly after that, with construction starting in spring of next year. And here we have an estimate of the construction cost of the project. We've taken the construction cost and highlighted some major categories for you tonight. About half, the, the total project cost is just over $2.5 million, $2,548,000 at this point. We do not anticipate the cost to go up from this number. About half of that cost is related to the superstructure and the exterior enclosure and the finishes changes. About $450,000 is related to the utility systems, including the data systems, the security cameras, the, the electrical power and the plumbing. We have an allowance of $180,000 for furniture for the rooftop deck. And then there's additional general conditions. There's a design contingency and contractor profit. And that brings us to the total of just over two and a half million.
And we've also been working with, that'll be able to give us some funding for eight access points for wifi out and upgrade our access points in the library and also for the wifi access out on the rooftop. And that would probably be about $200,000. So that would probably, it will go towards this also.
And that concludes the presentation. Can we answer any questions?
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Councilmember Dutra?
Thank you. Just a quick couple of questions. This is an exciting project. I think a lot of people are going to take advantage of it, especially if you want to just hold a meeting outside here. Now we have a cafe here in this building. I, I'm, I guess one, my couple, my couple of questions. One is why are you getting rid of the view? You know, build, putting, is that for safety? So people don't jump?
It is for safety.
You like that? I don't know. I kind of like it open. If it opened up, you see the mountains and, but oh, I guess there's kids around and stuff?
No.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you could probably put up something see-through. I don't know. I kind of like it, the access to be able to see the views.
There's another, it's not in this presentation, but it was in one of his other documents where there's a side view of when you're driving by and it's all light. And the shrubbery really doesn't deter from looking in. So it kind of gives the idea. And so that we have all these LED lights, you know, not flashing, of course, because that will cause some people some, some major headaches, but it'll give people the idea that we're here, we're ready, we're open. And, you know, we're the hub of downtown and we want you to come and visit.
And will the cafe be open the same hours as the library?
Absolutely.
Till eight o'clock or whenever it closes? And then in the, it, you know, gets dark early, would the public be able to rent the screen and do private movies with friends? And, or, or is this going to be a rentable space?
Not at the moment. It's not a rentable space.
Okay. So like if.
But if we partnered, if you, you know, with the Friends of the Library Organization, with the library, we'd be able to do a film screening. We do partner with the Watsonville Film Festival and other organizations. And so we could do events out there.
Okay. So the events that you're going to be allowing will be who we partner with or who you partner with.
Correct.
So if the, the city wants to do a, a whatever event, they'll be able to do an event or, and so you named a couple of organizations as well. But outside of that, you have not.
No, because we have to then apply for the fees and take it to council for approval.
Okay.
We, and we currently don't charge.
We, we haven't, we haven't, we haven't discussed programming quite yet. But with the additional space, traditionally the library has allowed community use of their rooms for free. With the addition of this new space is the possibility that we will have to kind of figure out how we program, particularly for maintenance and, and things of that sort. So that I, I see that will be a discussion that we will be having with the library director and, and maybe possibly being, bringing it back to council if that's what's decided.
Right. Especially since we do that at Ramsey Park, right? So we rent out that space. And I could see this, this conversation also, including maybe the new nature center. There might be opportunities for events. this conversation also, including maybe the new nature center. There might be opportunities for events to happen inside the nature center as well. So I think there might be a bigger conversation to be had as our new buildings are going up.
Council member Salsido?
I would encourage that conversation. Example, I just attended the Watsonville Hospital Community Foundation Gala event. And it was a wonderful event. It was on the top story of our parking lot, for example. And so a foundation like that, we raised one hundred and thirty thousand for our hospital would love, I think, to use this venue as well as many other groups that could possibly use this space and rent it and actually pay for its maintenance over time. That might be a really great way to partner in our community and I would love to see that back at council. I would definitely like to consider something like that. So thank you very much. This is a beautiful update.
Council member Clark?
Thank you very much for the chair is always moving on me. I've been looking forward to this a lot. And I'm very happy to see that it's progressing. I don't want to burst everybody's bubble because I want to see it rentable as well, but I see the problem of ingress and egress. How do you rent this space with not letting everyone into the library and how do you control that? So we need to find an answer to that first, right?
Correct. And then to what about council member Salsido? We see this as an opportunity for the friends of the library to use it as their annual gala and also for to fundraise for the library. So yes, that's the organization that would probably be using the venue for raising funds. But yes, we can bring him back to council later. First thing is we need to get it built.
Council member Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. Oh, exciting. It's it's beautiful. And I really, I mean, I love what everybody's saying about sharing it with everybody, but I'd really like to see the library be able to use this and and use it for all the special. I mean, if you're going to have a presentation on different things and that could be a regular venue, I see that being a really, I mean, that's a jewel for the library and it's a focus for it.
I also see a great opportunity for where the children areas. That's where we want to focus programming on teaching kids on sustainable, on how to grow their own vegetables. And then we have, remember, we have a Charlie cart. That's an induction oven with a sink and then in connection with the pavilion, they'll be able to grow their own food and then also, you know, prep it.
So not necessarily like the the big toy play thing that I'm looking at there, but it's really an interactive learning area.
More education.
Okay, great. What if it rains?
Then we close the outdoors.
Okay, I was thinking, have we thought about like stage two? For what it could possibly be a protected area, especially the the area over there. I mean, people, if they want to get something to eat and then whatever, they can duck and cover over there, but still the presentation area. So people can still attend a presentation, even though is that part of a future plan?
At this point, we haven't really considered it in detail from a design perspective, mostly due to trying to stay within the original project budget. That's definitely something that can be implemented, though.
It would be nice to know how much it costs because it rains here. You know, sometimes when we least want it to. And it's incumbent, but it is absolutely a beautiful space to develop. Is this city manager? Is this like looking out your window? Yes. Okay, yeah, that's great. Thank you.
Other questions from council? All right, I don't have any. Well, I guess I do have a question. What is the estimated completion?
The estimated completion would be early twenty twenty six, assuming everything goes according to schedule.
Excellent. That was my only question. I'm very excited about this because we can bring in authors and have all kinds of cool events for the library, local author. Yeah, super excited. So thank you so much for this presentation.
I also wanted to point out that just not only is there the entrance from the meeting room, there's also two entrances from either corner of the of the building also.
Thank you, Alicia. Yes. And those entrances are existing and will be maintained as part of this.
All right. Well, thank you very much for the presentation. We look forward to seeing it. We're, yeah, this is very, very exciting. Don't believe we're taking any action. So thank you very much. We're going to move on to item eleven B. Actually, eleven B will be pushed to our November meeting because our consultant could not make it. So that will be at our November meeting. I believe it's November ten, twelve, November twelve. So we're going to move forward to item twelve, twelve A. So we have got public hearings, ordinances and appeals, text amendments to Watsonville Municipal Code, Chapter five dash forty nine Cannabis Equity Program and Chapter fifteen dash fifty Cannabis Facilities. We have a staff report by Associate Planner Carmona. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. Council members and residents of Watsonville, my name is Ivan Carmona, Associate Planner for the Community Development Department. And tonight I'll be presenting a short presentation for the Cannabis Equity Ordnance Modifications. We'll start with the first slide. I'll bring council up to speed on how we got here. The city originally adopted its cannabis ordinance in two thousand sixteen via ordinance one, three, four, five dash sixteen. Subsequently, in two thousand nineteen, the city created a cannabis equity program through its ordinance one, three, eight, one dash one nine. In two thousand twenty two, the city partnered with California Center for Rural Policy at Count Paulie Humboldt to conduct a cannabis equity assessment. That assessment recommended zoning context amendments to the cannabis equity program as well as the cannabis district regulations. The city went ahead and amended the ordinance via fourteen forty eight dash twenty two, which allowed the city to apply competitively for state cannabis equity grant funding. In two thousand twenty two dash two thousand twenty three, the city received seven hundred and sixty seven thousand, four hundred and thirty six dollars and six hundred and ninety thousand, six hundred and ninety thousand was issued to two local cannabis businesses to support their development. Well, in two thousand twenty three, the city applied again for that cannabis equity grant. But this time, the city, the state provided more competitive guidelines. The city was not awarded that grant, but with the meetings with state representatives, they identified minor deficiencies in the cannabis equity program. One of those was section five dash four nine point oh four, which was found to be in violation of state and federal regulations because they gave preference to businesses that had at least fifty percent women. And the second one was that our cannabis equity permit set aside only allowed one equity permit per cannabis use permit. So with those two recommendations, the city is presenting these changes to the cannabis program. These are very minor changes to change just wording terms and things that the state pointed out that would make us more competitive this year. That first change is definitions. The first change would be the section five dash four nine point oh two. We would change the term license to permit, license to permitting, licensing official to permitting. So this would be to be consistent with state guidelines. The second change would be to strike out the eligibility criteria that identifies these fifty percent women owned businesses. So that eligibility criteria would be stricken from the ordinance. Again, very minor modifications. The third change, as you see here on this table, the cannabis district regulations currently set aside one cannabis equity licenses per permit, per cannabis permit. So by striking out the cannabis use permit set aside, I hear all these cannabis permits, the six cultivation, the fifteen manufacturing, the seven non-sulfur retail, the three store for retail, the two type events, reprocessing, all those are not for equity applicant status if the business owners meet eligibility criteria. The last change is continuation with the second slide. We have a section in the cannabis ordinance that talks about cannabis equity use permit set aside. We will strike out the wording where it says set aside, which means that now we're talking about the process for cannabis equity eligibility status, which means any applicant who has cannabis can submit an eligibility application anytime during the process. So this will help us be more competitive when we apply this year for grant. Doesn't guarantee we'll receive it, but hopefully it'll make us more competitive. And with that, that concludes my presentation. And with this, the planning commission recommends the city council adopt amendments to chapters five dash forty nine cannabis equity program and fourteen dash fifty three cannabis facilities of the Watson Municipal Code and finding the amendments exempt from review under the California Virtual Quality Act SEQA, pursuing the SEQA guidelines one, five, three, seven, eight, A and one, five, oh, six, one, subsection B and subsection three. I'll be happy to answer any questions from the council members.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Council member Salsido?
Could you drill down on what federal and what state laws are violated by requiring that women are fifty percent business owners?
Yes, the state said that was discriminatory because we can't base eligibility criteria on race or gender. And we did it based on gender, which the state state city violated state and federal guidelines.
What law? Do you know what law?
I don't know specifically what law, but I can get back to you if you want that information.
And we didn't violate the law last year when we got the grant?
That's why we're very confused when we submitted the application. We did what the cannabis equity assessment recommended. We applied for the grant. We received it and then we applied this year in two thousand twenty three or two thousand twenty two, the state said we were eligible and we had to strike that out from our ordinance. So it was very confusing. But we're doing what the state is recommending. So hopefully we could be more competitive this year.
And as of right now, we don't have any specificity as to what state law or what federal law they believe or perceive that we're violation of?
I believe we do have that information. I just don't have it in front of me. I'll be happy to bring that back at another time if you like.
Yes, I I do have concerns with I I don't I disagree with your language that this is a minor change as a woman. I think that this is an important aspect of equity and it's an equity grant. Reviewing some of the data, cannabis owned industries are, some of the data I've seen, thirty six percent are involved in the CEO aspect of cannabis industry who are women. So we are trying to encourage women owners to participate. I think that there's other statutes in which the this requirement has passed muster for any discriminatory analysis. And so I'm not satisfied at this point with that answer that somebody just said so, right? So that's my question and comment on that.
Our council members, Councilman Ari Parker?
Okay, there I am. Yeah, I was really confused. I'm going back to your history. So two thousand nineteen, that was thirteen eighty nine. That's when equity, this equity language was created. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah. And then in in two thousand twenty, twenty twenty one, there's nothing there. That's because we didn't submit an application for this equity grant. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So that even though we had people who qualified for equity, that equity grant, the city did not follow through with that.
Well, the city, working with the state, the state identified that we had to work with a consultant for the cannabis equity assessment. We didn't have that assessment. We created an ordinance without having the assessment. So then we had the assessment done by the
Yeah, because I was there at the time. And I'm going to tell you that that what happened is we didn't apply, we didn't apply. And then when we did apply in two thousand twenty two, that's when they said, hey, you know, we're not going to give you anything unless you do some changes to what's going on. But we would have known that in twenty or twenty one if we'd applied. So I'm just saying, our our cannabis partners that we have worked with and have really gone through a lot through this time period or all these years and have really stuck with us had opportunity and we couldn't help them because we didn't have that. And I'm I'm a little worried. I'm with the councilwoman Salsido on this about this being is a state deficiency? I mean, if it's out now violation of a law, then why can't they state that rather than call it a state deficiency? So I'm I'm confused. And if you're confused, I don't want to vote on anything tonight. If if we don't have that clarity, because I think women own businesses with at least and and it is qualifying, right? Fifty percent? At least fifty percent. I think that's important. And I think that that's part of the equity. I mean, I know college students all over who studied our equity, our equity program and have looked at it and really positive about how we, I mean, I thought it was very fully developed. So I'm I'm really I'm just really clumped on this that the state is not clarifying it to you and you guys haven't provided that clarification yet. You're bringing this to us to decide something without that clarification and and just striking that women's fifty percent ownership.
Well, just to add, and hopefully to answer your question. If we don't get these amendments done, then we wouldn't be competitive applicant and we may not receive any grant funding.
And what and who said that? Do we have a letter?
Yeah, these are state representatives.
Yeah, but they they gave us a letter.
We had a meeting. We have notes from the meeting. When we submitted the app, so the way it works is when we submit an application, we meet with state officials, they could determine and review the application, how it was scored.
Yeah.
When when we reviewed the application, they identified where we were short in our application and recommended how we can do amendments to the ordinance to make us more competitive. As the state developed this equity program, other cities and jurisdictions as well has developed their program. So the funding is is getting scarce. And because more cities are applying for this funding, things change every year with the with the state, which is why we were very confused when we said we just did this equity assessment. We thought we were doing what the choir, now you're telling us to change it. So the the issue here is we don't do these changes and not receive grant or be we not award be awarded a grant, which will not help our cannabis equity as businesses that we have at the moment. I understand.
Qualify with other equity issues.
Yeah, I understand the confusion. At this point, it's one language we're striking out. Will it make us guaranteed to get it? I it's hard to say, but we're doing what the state is recommending.
Okay, I hear you say that. But did they put it in writing that we have to strike it and 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 we would not be qualified? It makes us more attractive? Is that what you're saying? That the state said it makes us more attractive?
Competitive.
Competitive. Okay, competitive. What does that mean then? I mean, I really am. I'm trying to figure that out because
So that that means that we would be consistent with the state equity guidelines because they get updated every year.
That was up in twenty twenty two. We had the whole big thing that we did.
And and those were updated again in two thousand twenty three.
That's right. And then now it's twenty twenty four and we're out of compliance of some sort.
Correct.
But yet they didn't give you any rationale why we're out of compliance?
The the rationale is we cannot discriminate based on gender or race.
Okay, but we could all those other years?
We can look at the eligibility criteria if you want. I have a slide.
I'm just asking because that didn't change. I mean, that's been in place since we did this equity. Part of our, you know, the city of Watsonville, our equity program. I'm just really confused by by what the state is saying and what you guys interpret from the state. Yes. Do you have a clarification on that?
Yeah, I I like to help Ivan say the same thing. The council certainly doesn't, you don't have to amend your ordinance to strike that language. However, in meeting is my understanding in meeting with the state that in order for the city to maintain a competitive application for the equity grant, which we are about to submit.
Yes.
And in preparation for that, if we wanted to bring the that funding locally, they suggested, the state suggested meeting with with CDD staff to strike that language so that it is in compliance with the state guidelines. Certainly, the council may choose not to do that. We still be able to apply whether we remain competitive against other applicants who have who are in compliance with the state guidelines. That's to be determined. It's not we. We can say yes or no for sure. But the council definitely has the option not to amend the ordinance and maintain your language as is or follow the lead of the state that is indicating that for us to be more competitive, that needs to be addressed.
Yeah.
So certainly in your hands.
Thank you. Thank you. I was going to ask, Sam, could I help you as well?
Yeah, so I I'm looking at what I think are the grant guidelines for this grant. I don't know. And what these say, so I'm looking at grant guidelines for fiscal year twenty 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 three, twenty four, which might be from the prior year. But anyway, it's cannabis equity grant. cannabis equity grant program for local jurisdictions, state guidelines. And it says, let's see, local equity programs may not include eligibility criteria that violate the equal protection clauses of the U.S. and California constitutions. And another article of the California Constitution, Prop two oh nine, such as race, race, ethnicity, gender, sexual orientation, et cetera. Local jurisdictions that include such eligibility criteria in their local and equity program will not be awarded grant funds. So to answer Councilmember Salsido's question, presumably, the federal and state law references were to the state and federal constitutions. And I would assume that the state is saying, if you have these provisions in your ordinance, we will not award you grant funds. Why they were permitted in years past, we will never know.
Okay, yeah, I I don't understand it. And and it also takes away from the thought of about the original idea of our equity grant and what we were trying to do with it. Okay?
And our equity businesses are here. If you case, in case you, council, I'll ask them questions.
Councilmember Dutra?
Couple of quick questions. One is if we do remove this, or we do, do your recommendations, will this remove the this, the additions to? Can you go back to the, with everything through?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the number equity license, so will that remove that entire column? And so whoever do we, and we have somebody right now under that, the storefront as a special equity person?
So currently, we have two equity businesses, unfortunately, they're not storefronts. One's a manufacturer and the other one's a cultivator. But now by striking out the middle column, all these other permits, you see all these numbers, all those would be eligible for equity status as long as that business meets the eligibility criteria.
Okay, I see what you're saying. Okay, so will those two businesses that you're talking about right now, they will be pushed into the other column, max, the maximum facilities allowed?
They they would remain equity applicants. So yes, they they would be pushed into the other column.
But that funding is not guaranteed right now, right? You you would have to apply for it. And so you're assuming you're going to be getting the funding for those businesses to stay in that under equity?
We're gonna apply and hopefully we get awarded.
And if you don't get awarded, what happens to businesses?
They just don't get any assistance from the city.
But they can continue, continue running.
They will remain equity applicants. They just won't get benefits from the city.
Okay, so we're not going to be shutting down anybody. They just won't be getting.
Correct. We're not going to be shutting down anyone. They're just not going to be getting the benefits from the city.
And so it sounds like there's old businesses throughout the different types, one A, two A, six, all the way down to processing. How do you distribute the funding once you get it for the equity funding in?
Right now, we have two equity applicants or businesses. So we just divide it up. They get each half of whatever we receive.
And so if you had six, you'd be just dividing it equally. There's no formula to it.
Correct.
Okay. And and I do understand what the council members were saying, you know, it's the intention was to get more women into the business. And and I think everybody was very, yeah, and to give opportunity. But also understand the law as well. I mean, it is, you can't, you have to, so, but maybe there, because there are process that we could continue keeping an open mind when filling these positions, trying to bring in diverse people to fill those spots. And how do we attract people of different? I just heard a moan in the audience. But how do we attract different people to get into this industry? How do we get women, people of color? You know, have we thought about that?
I I think speaking to the business owners would be better. They probably answer that better than that.
As a community, just like with economic development, and we're gonna go out, try to bring in businesses into our community. I think it's also, there is a responsibility on us to try to bring in a diverse group of people in these positions.
From working with the business owners, I can tell you they're struggling because the cannabis industry inflation allows other businesses to adjust prices, but cannabis cannot. They can't change their prices. So with the inflation occurring at the moment, they're really hurting as far as they can, you know, up their prices. So they are losing money. Just to give you an example, working with them from information they passed to me, when this industry first started, pound of cannabis was about twenty-six hundred dollars. I think now a pound is about five hundred dollars. And now the more cultivators are in the market, the lower it costs, the prices come down. And we're, we're really working with small, local entrepreneurs or not, don't have big money behind them. So we're trying to do our best to assist them to survive, hopefully have a future.
And we've, we've seen this happen with the agricultural world, right? I mean, we've seen really the smaller farmer get kind of swallowed up by the big companies. So it's, it's, I mean, just, I've seen this. I've seen the the big conglomerates, you know, really take over the industry. So and I feel bad because I remember when this was being sold to us back in the day, there were certain councilmembers up here, up here who thought we were going to be paving our roads with gold because of all the money they thought was going to be coming in. And now we're, we're sympathetic with the business owners because they're really struggling. So the reality is not what everyone envisioned it to be at the beginning. And it's also been a learning curve too, because this is new to everybody and we're creating, you know, ordinances and rules and regulations as we go. So I think we, you know, what we can do to help preserve what we have and give assistance, I think that's important. But it's a very tough business and we, and like I said, it's not just happened to the cannabis industry, it happens in agriculture as well. So thank you.
Councilmember Salsido?
Do you know what percentage of cannabis businesses in Watsonville are fifty percent women-owned?
I believe we don't have any businesses that are women-owned in Watsonville.
So zero, and we're getting rid of the, the capacity to incite, incentivize, thank you, not incite. I was like, incite, that's a riot. No.
What I, what I could add though is that.
Incentivize women-owned cannabis industry, right? We're getting rid of that, having zero in our community.
What I could say though is our cannabis businesses in the city do allow their employees to purchase shares in their businesses. So they are partial owners, but you know, one percent, two percent.
I guess, just I, I, I see what you're, the, what you're, what you're saying in terms of incentivizing. But the way that the city acquires a tool to be able to incentivize minorities to enter the business is by being able to tap into this financial support that we can pass through from the state to directly to to the businesses. Whether they are minority-owned or women-owned or whoever needs, meets the criteria to be an equitable applicant. It is help if if we are eligible to get it from the state. If we don't get the funds from the state, there's no way for the city to really contribute to lifting up these businesses and these minority-owned businesses. So I just want to make sure that that's clear. Other questions from council before I take it out to the public? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up to public comment. If anyone from the public would like to speak on this item, please come to the podium. Welcome.
Good evening, council. I'm James Cunningham with Fox City Farms and BTW Industries. Okay. I just want to, again, I'm James Cunningham with BTW Industries, Fox City Farms. And I just want to say thank you to the department for for putting together the social equity permittee process to allow us this opportunity. At forty years old, I've been in this industry for around twenty years now. And this is one of the only things that is a true representative of my history in the industry, which is something that's very largely unable to be documented, right? Given the the, the nature of things. And so as we ascended this, we were seeing a ridiculous amount of oversaturation. You know, the saturation that we're seeing in the state would be equivalent to all the strawberries grown in Watsonville needing to be sold in Watsonville. You know, that's what we're seeing within the state. And so so that raises a bunch of different questions, but ultimately, that's what we're having to compete with. And many of these folks we're competing with can take losses every month that are larger than our entire annual revenue. So last time that we received some of these fundings, it enabled us to launch a whole manufacturing and 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 system and and start producing pre-rolls, which allowed us to be more competitive in the space that we wouldn't be able to to produce, given that we're just trying to pay our bills every month, you know? And build these brands, compete in a space as a family business that's very locally run and and in a grassroots organization that's just kind of built from the ground up. And if we need to bring on resources, we have to get private funding because we can't go to the bank. So you get private funding, you give away your equity, you lose your company. And the competition that we're seeing is is, it's unreasonable and unnatural. And it's a historic time in this industry that would be greatly assisted by by the social equity approach. So we appreciate your work very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on this item? Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Kolodinsky. I'm with Crimcana. I want to express my gratitude to Ivan and the Community Development Department for putting this together and doing their best to keep on top of the never-ending moving of the goalposts that the state continues to throw at our industry. Take a second to thank the city council who's been with us on this entire journey. You know, in doing your best to to bring to light an industry that, you know, didn't exist and and needed to be regulated and all these other things. I think as a community, you know, we have done everything we can to be as inclusive as possible to every walk of life, no matter where from the world you are from or where you go to the bathroom. And unfortunately, this industry has dealt a level of compression that is greater than the bottom of the Mariana Trench. And the fact of the matter is, I don't think that our business would be here if this grant hadn't come through when it did. And so as James said, you know, there's not a lot of, of good things that that have happened over the course of time. You know, everybody hoped that we were going to be able to pave the streets of gold and and that we'd all be able to do all these amazing things for our family and all the people around us. But the reality is the state over-licensed, there's more cannabis grown than can consumed. It's driven the the value through the floor of everything. And as entrepreneurs, we're having to compete with with corporate behemoths, you know, that that are able to to burn greater than our entire combined revenue on a monthly basis to push us out. And anyways, I hope you pass this. If you don't, we won't get any money next year. And that will be terrible.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public who'd love to speak on this item? Going once, going twice. All right, I don't see anyone else from the public wishing to speak. So I'm gonna bring it back to council for the appropriate motion. Given the discussion that was had and the clarifying answers to council member questions, I am ready to make a motion to approve this item. All right, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any comments from council? Before we vote? Councilmember Salsido?
I will be voting no on this motion tonight. I feel very strongly that if we have zero fifty percent women-owned businesses in Watsonville, I'm not convinced that this is per se an equal protection argument. This type of language has existed in other areas and other codes in education, in other areas where this has not been a problem, something like this. And so I don't think it's per se equal protection issue. It hasn't really specifically stated, even though it's in the grant, like what exactly is the violation? I'm not comfortable removing our language that tries to encourage women-owned businesses in our community. To me, this reminds me of the arguments against Title Nine, right? All sports will suffer if we let women come in and there's only so much funding. And you know, there was the exact same arguments that happened with that equity program. And so I don't believe in sacrificing principles for just getting the money. So I'm gonna be voting no on this.
Any other comments from council?
I'll make a comment. So I definitely see where Councilmember Salsido and Councilmember Parker are coming from because it's like, okay, let's do diversity and inclusion and all that good stuff. But no, not like that. So I really, I'm like, kind of scratching my head, like, how do they expect us to do this if we have to strike some of the language that would be inclusive? That's really doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. And I will be voting yes on this because I don't want businesses to not get the funding that are already here. I think this is like very, very odd from state. And it just, to me, it just kind of reeks of like, oh, let's get rid of affirmative action. Let's get rid of these things that have, you know, been historically equalizers. So it's just, it's very weird. So although I'm I'm not really happy about the language either, I'm I'm gonna go ahead and vote yes. Do we have any other counts, comments from counts? Yes, no? All right. We do have a motion and a second. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, ma'am. I'd just like to clarify the motion includes I am twelve A six. It's by motion introduced for first reading by title only, waiving full reading of the text and ordinance amending certain sections of chapter forty-nine cannabis equity program of title five, public welfare morals and conduct of the Watson Municipal Code regarding the cannabis equity program. And by motion introduced for first reading by title only, waiving the full reading of the text and ordinance amending certain sections of chapter fifty-three cannabis facilities of title fourteen zoning of the Watson Municipal Code regarding cannabis equity program. Clark?
Hi.
Dutra?
Hi.
Montesino?
Yes.
Porosco?
Hi.
Parker?
No.
Salsido?
No.
Get those Carter?
Hi.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. We are now going to move on to item twelve B. Density bonus, major subdivision and tentative map for a thirteen lot subdivision located at thirty-six Airport Road. And we have a staff report by Principal Planner Orbach.
Thank you, Mayor Cross Carter and council. I'm here tonight to present thirty-six Airport Road. It's been a very long process for this whole set of parcels here on Evan Circle and Evan Court, going all the way back to two thousand and six, if you read the background section. And then the last two years between the submittal of a pre-application for this development and then the formal application, we encountered a lot of other challenges related, specifically related to the ownership of Evan Court, the road parcel there adjacent to this, which we'll get into in a little bit. But it's, it's a great organization with Habitat for Humanity that I used to volunteer with as a kid in North Carolina. And so, you know, we've been very supportive through the process with brainstorming creative solutions and just, you know, working hard to get this done. So I'm very, very excited to bring this to you tonight after a couple of years of work. We do have a couple of representatives for, from Habitat for Humanity in the audience tonight, as well as the project architect, Bill Kempf. So they will be available to answer questions after the presentation. So this is the vacant parcel located at thirty-six Airport Road. This is the view from Airport Road. And then I walked to the back corner of Evan Court and took a parcel looking forward just to give everybody a, as beautiful view of the mountains and parcels I could. And then here's our satellite view showing the extent of the parcel at thirty-six Airport Road, the Evan Court Road parcel, which I mentioned previously, which was part of that Evan Court subdivision that was never transferred in terms of ownership. And then you see just below this, the two parcels associated with the Evan Circle subdivision, which we will be going over next, as well as the existing subdivision at Evan Circle adjacent to Airport Road there. So the general plan land use classification for these parcels is residential medium density. And then the zoning for the parcel is RM two, which is multiple residential medium density. This is the, uh, site plan here outlined in the blue dashed line, which includes both the thirty-six Airport Road parcel, as I mentioned, as well as the road parcel. Uh, it is a thirteen lot subdivision, uh, includes construction of thirteen single family homes, which consist of five duplex style townhomes, two, two-story detached, single-family homes on lot one and ten, and one one-story accessible detached, single-family home. Uh, the project also includes new curb gutter and sidewalk along Evan Court, Evan Circle, and the project frontage along Airport Road. Uh, there's also a combination of new and resurfaced street with the sort of half-half, um, of the existing Evan Court, as well as the new road, uh, portion adjacent to these new units. Uh, and then another portion of this project that was of interest was the drainage and the drainage system here is going to be, uh, the back portion will be flowing to Gino Court. Uh, and then the front part will be flowing to Airport Road, not to the detention basin in the existing subdivision on Evan Circle. Um, this doesn't really pretend to you, but it's informative. So here's the, or the townhomes. And the floor plans for the detached, single-family dwelling. And the detached accessible, single-family dwelling. A couple of elevations for you as well, as you see, it's a combination of, uh, horizontal siding and vertical board and batten. Um, very, um, typical right now trendy for this area in terms of a lot of what you see being developed in the county, Capitola, Santa Cruz and here. And a few renderings just showing what it'll look like in reality when the project is complete. And a couple of images here of the landscaping as well. So you have an idea of what's envisioned when the project is, is complete and everything's planted. Uh, this project is also invoking a state density bonus law as a hundred percent affordable housing development. Um, development projects that provide a hundred percent, uh, affordable units for lower income households qualify for an eighty percent density bonus. Um, which makes the math really easy on this one because the base density is ten units. So an eighty percent density bonus gives them an additional eight, uh, for a total of eighteen units. But as you noticed, they've, they're only proposing thirteen. Um, they also qualify for three concessions or five concessions, but they've requested three. Um, reduce minimum lot sizes, reduce minimum lot widths and reduce minimum side yard setbacks. Uh, and then they also requested and were granted, uh, five waivers related to covered parking, tandem parking restrictions, uh, front yard setbacks, setbacks to the sidewalk and rear yard setbacks. And that's due to the, uh, the small lot sizes. Uh, pursuant to our Watsonville municipal code, uh, estate density law request, uh, needs to be reviewed by the planning commission before it comes to council. Uh, on October first, the planning commission adopted resolution twenty-four reckoning approval of a density bonus for this project. Uh, you as the city council are the final decision-making authority for density bonus applications. Uh, and as you know, since the staff report, based on staff analysis, the proposed project is consistent with the required density bonus findings. And those are included in, uh, exhibit A of the resolution. Uh, similarly, major subdivisions and tentative maps need to be reviewed by the planning commission first. So they also reviewed that on October first and made a positive recommendation. Uh, based on staff analysis, uh, the proposed tentative app is consistent with the required tentative map findings as well. And those are located in exhibit C. I'm sorry, findings are located in exhibit B of the resolution and the conditions of approval are located in exhibit C. So with that, here is the tentative map that is proposed. Uh, in terms of environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA, uh, the tentative map is exempt under section fifteen, three, three, two, which is an infill development exemption for projects that, uh, don't cause significant environmental impacts. Uh, and then this one also was reviewed in relation to SEQA section fifteen, three hundred point two, because it is being done in conjunction with the adjacent project to make sure there weren't cumulative, uh, impacts based on the combination of the two projects, uh, and it was determined that they did not. So that staff recommends adopting a resolution approving a density bonus major subdivision and tentative map for a new thirteen lot subdivision located at thirty-six Airport Road and finding the project category categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under SEQA guidelines, section fifteen, three, three, two. And with that, we'll be able to answer any questions. And as I mentioned, the applicants and architect are here as well.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Council member Parker?
Thank you. Uh, this is exciting. Can you go back to, um, number six? That, that was, that's fine. That one's fine. I was looking at the site plan one. I was looking at mine. Yeah. And so, um, each home has two parking spaces back to, you know, front to back, right there in, in a driveway? Tandem.
Yes.
I learned a new word and how it's applied to parking. Tandem parking. Okay. So in tandem parking, uh, on the street, on the Evan Court Street this round, is there any parking on that?
There is limited street parking along Evan Court. Yes.
And where is that? And how much would that be?
In between the existing driveways. I don't have a number, but I could get one for you.
Well, I'm just, uh, I'm, I represent Vista Montana. And the last time we had high density issues, you know, and I know what it, what has resulted in for parking issues. So that's why I'm asking the question. So if we're approving something, it'd be nice to know that particular piece of information about how much that street could absorb, um, of extra cars. And if they can't park there, where would they be parking? Out of curiosity, I don't know the area really well.
Parking is going to be an interesting challenge moving forward under, uh, the new and emerging housing laws. Um, it would be in the general area, uh, but the state has really limited what can be required in terms of onsite parking. Um, and there are no requirements in terms of parking in the area. So, um, I will say that in relation to this issue, um, there is a condition of approval that will require, um, street signs to be, uh, installed stating that, uh, there's no street parking on trash pickup days, for example, um, because there was not, uh, they didn't want to red curb all week, areas where the trash cans would go for pickups. So, um, there were some steps taken to ensure that as much parking as possible could be provided for the majority of the week.
Okay, but, uh, parking to a certain extent is out of our hands. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
And that's mandated by the state of California.
Yes. And as a matter of fact, under state density bonus law, they could have actually requested a concession to have no onsite parking. So, um, it is, it is, um, fortunate for us that they did provide two onsite parking spaces for each of these units.
Okay. I just think the public needs to hear that because in, in many ways, uh, we're supposedly a decision-making body, but the state has taken a lot of this away from us. Thank you very much.
Are there questions from council? All right. Council member Clark?
Just out of curiosity, uh, this is, uh, for sale or for rent, or do we know?
Habitat is always for sale and, and they can really, we really elaborated on this at planning commission. So if you want to.
Okay, good. No, no.
We can do that.
That is, that is a very good thing. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions from council? All right. Seeing no more questions from council, I'm going to take it out to the public for public comment. Uh, would anyone from the public like to comment on this item? If so, please come to the podium. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. My name is, uh, Bill Kempf. I'm the architect for this project and the project next door as well. Um, I've been involved with this property since two thousand and six and, um, involved with Habitat since two thousand and eight. I've done their other two projects in Live Oak. We're very excited about the project. Uh, this parcel was, um, was deeded to Habitat. And, um, I think it's a great opportunity for building, um, building homes in, in Watsonville and for less fortunate people to, to work towards ownership. Um, we, we can talk in depth about Habitat if, if you're curious about it. Um, and we, we're happy to talk about the project as well. So if you have any questions, um, the executive directors here, um, Catherine and, um, do you want to, she'd like to say a couple of things too, but I'm available for technical questions.
Thank you, Bill, and thank you, uh, uh, council members, mayor, and Matt, and I see Carlos is here. I probably was here a minute ago, um, as well. But I want to thank you for considering this this evening to build thirteen affordable homes for homeownership opportunities for low-income families. Um, is, is just a fantastic opportunity for us to make a difference. And as you know, the habitat model is quite a specific model where the families chosen have to put five hundred hours of sweat equity into building the homes. We have a volunteer base to help build and I hope all of you will come out and, uh, or maybe, maybe even help us build these homes as well. But you're also welcome. It's going to be, uh, a volunteer opportunity, a community opportunity and one which we want to celebrate as well. So thank you for giving us this opportunity this evening. It has been six years in the making, but we're going to make up for time as we get out there and groundbreaking in the twenty twenty-five. So thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak? All right. Seeing no one else from the public, I will bring it back to council. Council member Dutra?
Um, thank you. I, uh, a couple of quick questions. Um, so these are going to be low income, but low income in Watsonville is how much?
Hundred eighty thousand.
Uh, uh, no, we don't have to make a motion first.
I think maybe Carlos, would you like to answer that?
Yeah. What are this going to start at? Cause I was trying to think of what the low income are starting at the new project. What's, what are they? Do you know them? At the ones off of a loaning?
Good evening, Carlos Landa, very housing manager. So low income for a family of four. In order to qualify for any housing programs, family of four needs to make less than one hundred forty-three thousand dollars. But with, for this project, there are thirteen units. Usually the families that get into the programs, they have to make less than that much, but they make a lot less than that. They have to work extra hard to help build those units. And in this particular project, we also have five units reserved for farm workers. And Habitat has applied for state funding and there is, they have already most of it through Cal Home, through the Josera program. And so we're expecting thirteen very low-income families to benefit and own a piece.
Because I know our loan here is like, you said a hundred and forty-four thousand?
Yes, that's for low income.
I, that's, that's low income for here. So that's not very low income in a lot of people's minds, right? So, um, is there a, um, a price that, and how does this work? If you get chosen, um, for one of these projects, you have to put some time into building them, from what I understand. And is there a, do you have to pay a certain amount as well? And so what would it be like? What would be the, how do you determine the price per unit?
So the city, when the income limits come to the city council for approval, at that time, depending on the interest rate and, um, the income limits at that, at that point, we'll do the calculation based on that and based on the median income for Watsonville residents.
Tell me what last year's was.
So right now, a three-bedroom house under the same income category, it would be selling for three hundred forty-nine thousand dollars.
Oh, wow. That they're getting a good, that's a good deal then.
Yes.
Yeah. So brand new, even though, you know, some a lot, three hundred forty-nine is a lot of money, but here that's not. So you would have to pay the three forty-nine, you had to put in the, this, the, the equity or you have to help build it. And, um, is there any other requirements that you need to, to do? I'm like looking at you because I know it's your project, so. What other requirements are?
The income requirements, as Carlos has said, there's also the, um, ability for the family to take on the responsibility as well of, of an ownership opportunity and also the five hundred hours sweat equity. So there's kind of clear income criteria that we have to abide by because that is what we have worked with Carlos on. But also we have, we know that, um, the five hundred hours sweat equity is also an absolute, um, a, a, a people's, the family sign up for that to put that effort into building their home. And the thing, um, a, a assembly member, uh, uh, sorry, council member Dutra, sorry, it's twenty to nine. And I know you've been here since half four as well, um, is that, uh, the families build the homes with their neighbors. So they're not only just building their homes, they're building community with their neighbors as well. And so we're not just building homes, we're building community while we're building those homes, which is quite a unique model, uh, compared to other developments too.
I have two more questions.
Yeah, sure.
One is if they, so this house is three bedroom, is probably brand new looking, the, the, from the designs you showed us is probably maybe eight hundred thousand dollars brand new. So, um, if, can they resell them and get, how does that work?
So what happens is if, um, a family wants to sell, and very rarely does Habitat families sell the home. But if they want to sell it, it's sold back to Habitat at the principal level and will always remain an affordable home in the community. So the great guarantee of a Habitat homes is that they remain affordable homes.
So they sell it back to you?
Yes. And then we find another family locally working with the, the, the local area that is eligible. And perhaps they haven't put the five hundred hours sweat equity into that particular build, but the commitment to helping us if we've got another build or in a volunteer opportunity, that's, that's what's happened in, in, in the past, but very few, I think it's maybe five families have sold, five.
And when you say sold, they don't make a profit though.
They, they, they've sold it back to us and another family.
But it's no profit.
No profit.
So they just, they get their, they get their money back.
Principal level. Okay. So you're not with a Habitat home, what you're getting is the stability of home ownership. And I think I shared with you the UCSE report we've done with Habitat families, an academic piece of research, which shows that the home ownership gives the stability, but also the economic stability, the family stability, the generational stability. Um, and also Habitat families through having that stability contribute more to their local community as well. So if, uh, uh, we send this round so you can see.
And my last question to you is, um, you've said you've chosen these families already.
No, we've not chosen.
Oh, you have not. Okay. So what's your process? So for people listening tonight?
Yeah.
Who are like, I want to win the lottery and get one of these spots.
Sure.
How do they, they have to be local? How do they apply? Like, so what are the?
Open process, um, a, a, a council member Dutra, and that open process will be widely advert, widely advertised. And at the moment, we've not advertised this and because we can't presume tonight that you're going to vote on this. Once it's voted on, we will have a family service, uh, member who will be the point of contact for the families. And we'll go out and we will select those families based on the strict income criteria, the five hundred hours sweat equity, and also the ability of the family to be able to take the responsibility of what ownership means.
Great. Thank you. I know somebody else wants to make the motion. So, but I, I just have those questions, but thank you so much.
And I hope you'll come out and see the builder.
Maybe I'll swing a hammer.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I believe Mayor Protem had a question.
Yes, I do. Um, so as part of the process, uh, families apply for a loan, they get approved. They basically go through the process, just like any other person applying for, um, for, uh, a mortgage. Um, but then you do have like a point system, right? That in the selection process, uh, based on home visits, I believe.
There's, there's, in previous times, we have done home visits, haven't we, Lindsay? But, um, there is some, um, uh, new evidence that perhaps home visits are not the best way to conduct, um, ways to frankly, you know, there's so many people that are in need and, 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 you know, so, um, we may change that. In previous times we have had home visits, but I think moving forward, we will look at best practices. And that comes from Habitat International, where we work with other affiliates to make sure that we're in keeping with what is, uh, you know, the best, the best practices possible. So I think in future that the, the subject of home visits will not be one that we will be conducting.
Okay. Thank you. I, I had the opportunity to, uh, do some site visits a year ago.
Oh, great.
Uh, I think it was at Haas or somewhere in Santa Cruz. And there was, I, I was able to see families working on building their homes. And I was able to see, uh, newer, uh, the newer homes build where families were moving in. So it was really nice and heartwarming to be able to see that and just the pride and that sense of community that you mentioned. Uh, it was very neat to see. I also got to visit another humanity site that had been in place for about fifteen years. And it amazed me, uh, just how. families have taken so much pride. They clean, they keep their uh, their home clean and beautiful. Their landscape is amazing. I didn't see any parking issues. So it's really such a neat opportunity, I think, for uh, the city of Watsonville. So I'm definitely in support of this project. Um, if we can find ways to continue to partner with Habitat for Humanity in the future, I think it would be something worth exploring. Um, and so since this project will be in District Three.
Yes, it is.
I would like to make a motion to approve this item tonight.
I'll second. All right, um, I believe count before we have a vote, I believe Councilmember Salsido had a question.
Yes, I just had one more question. The timing of financing for the applicant for the mortgages. Like, do they go through a traditional mortgage? Are they expected to apply for that financing before they move in? Is that something that you work with the applicant on? Like, could they do the five hundred hours of sweat equity and then apply? Because sometimes credit is a problem. I mean, what type of mortgage programming is here for that price point?
So the other part of it as well is that the family can't spend more than thirty percent of their um, income, and that means that the mortgage payment, the interest payments, the home association fees, all of that.
Could you lift the microphone and get it closer to?
Sorry.
There we go, thank you.
No problem. I've here we go. Um, I'll just put this down if that's okay. So there's the income side of things as well to make sure that the families, you know, have that extra money, because many families, as you know, are spending more than fifty percent, sixty percent on the on rent. And so when it comes to thinking about the thirty percent is a very important figure. When we're trying to make sure that that income is is also a qualification too. But we what we used to do the mortgages, we weren't just a home builder, we're also we're also doing the mortgage, and we no longer do that. And many of the recent families we've worked with have their mortgages with with somebody like Befed and and work with um, tho- tho- those folks there too. So we help part of the process as well for our families is there's a large education component to it as well about what is having a mortgage? What is making sure you're paying, you know, the the your your, you know, your insurance and different pieces to that puzzle? And so that's really important to us, and we do that as well as a process of when um, the families are chosen. Once you've built, you know, sweat equity is put in, we work with the families to make sure that when they're on their own and paying that mortgage and having the home, that they're set up for success. And that's what we want. We want our families to be as successful as possible. And um, and in the report, you can see that many of the outcomes of our families, um, there was somebody actually I met last week um, at the Santa Cruz Chamber of Commerce Women's and Leaders event, and she looked at my badge and she said, you work for Habitat. I was brought up in a Habitat home. And I asked her, what happened? You know, tell me about your brothers and sisters. And one was a mechanic, she was working in sales, another was an engineer, and she said it was the stability of the home that helped turn her family. And I thought that was just a lovely story I just wanted to share when you give me the opportunity to. Thank you.
I helped build the places at Rodeo Cart. And did the last five units. One of the things I learned that surprised me is uh, when the people qualified for their loans. The interest rates were like two, three percent. When it came to close, they were up to six to seven to eight percent. Habitat guarantees that the occupants will not spend any more than thirty percent of their income. And they subsidize those payments as necessary. Reduces the equity they built, but that's what I understand as a worker hearing, talking to people. So that's a pretty important.
Thank you. All right, we had a motion in a second, and I believe we're ready for a roll call vote.
Mary, I want to clarify that the motion includes um, twelve B six and twelve B seven, both resolutions.
Yes. Did you want us to do separate?
No, no, that's totally acceptable. I just want to for the for the record.
Gotcha.
Clark?
Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Porosco?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Salsido?
Yes.
Niqueros Carter?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you very much. Very excited about this project. And as Mayor Protem said, um, we're very happy about this, and it would be great to explore further partnership opportunities with Habitat. All right, moving forward, we are now on item twelve C. Um, and we have density bonus majors, uh, major subdivision and tentative map for a five lot subdivision located at Evan Circle. And we're going to continue to hear for from Principal Planner Orbach.
Yeah, you have me for three in a row tonight, so. And you have to shake off that feeling of deja vu because the satellite view is showing you the same set of parcels. Uh, so this is the adjacent uh, set of parcels at the end of Evan Circle. Uh, this is the project that will um, sort of complete the new U-shaped neighborhood uh, between Evan Court and Evan Circle. Uh, this is only a five lot subdivision, but it's actually ten units because there are also five associated attached ADUs. We have the view from Airport Road, so it's I couldn't get any closer on this on Google Street View, but it is the parcels at the end there where you see the little white fence. Uh, as I mentioned, it's these two parcels at the back corner here at the end of the existing Evan Circle subdivision, uh, adjacent to thirty six Airport Road. Uh, very similar to the last project, the general plan land use classification is residential medium density, and the zoning is also RM two multiple residential medium density. So here's the site plan with the existing Evan Circle development outlined in the dashed blue lines. Notice that uh, since we were talking about parking earlier, um, these ones each have three parking spaces. So there's one garage space and two uh, spaces in the driveway, not in them, side by side. Uh, and that would be two for the primary unit as well as one additional one for the accessory dwelling unit, even though under state law, they do not have to provide that third space for the accessory dwelling unit. Uh, the uh, project includes obviously a five lot subdivision, uh, street improvements, construction of five new single family homes with attached second story ADUs, which I already mentioned. Uh, that includes, you know, new street curb gutter sidewalk, and this will, as I mentioned, connect Evan Circle with the extension of Evan Court being installed as part of the adjacent project at thirty six Airport Road. So we have the floor plans here for lot nine. And the elevations. And then the floor plans for lots ten and twelve. And the elevations. And you can see it's kind of similar to the one next door. I mean, obviously, it's the same architect, um, but they did mix it up with this one with the mix of stucco and vertical board and batten siding. So it is different, slightly different from the adjacent uh, thirty six Airport Road neighborhood. And then we have uh, floor plans for eleven and thirteen, and then the uh, elevations for eleven and thirteen as well. And also the landscape plan for these five lots. Uh, this project is also requesting a density bonus. So as I mentioned previously, um, development projects that provide a certain amount of affordable housing uh, are qualified to invoke state density bonus law. Projects that provide ten percent of units for lower income households qualify for a twenty percent density bonus and two concessions. There is one affordable unit identified in this project, which is lot nine. Uh, their base density was four units, the twenty percent density bonus allowed for an additional unit. So that's why you're looking at five units here. Uh, there were two concessions requested, and those were reduced minimum lot sizes similar to the other project, uh, and reduced minimum lot widths. Uh, but that was actually only for lot twelve, so the rest actually do comply. Uh, and then there were three waivers granted as well. So we had front yard setbacks, setbacks to sidewalk, and the rear yard setback uh, just for lot nine. So as I mentioned previously, uh, you know, the planning commission is required to review these first and make a recommendation. So on October first, they also uh, reviewed this project and adopted resolution ten twenty four recommending approval of CDG bonus. Uh, US City Council are the final decision-making body once again, uh, based on our sales, the it's consistent with the density bonus findings and finding located in exhibit A. And then similarly with the subdivision and tentative map, um, once again, planning commission had to review it. They did so. They made a positive recommendation. Uh, staff found that the proposed tenant app is consistent with the required findings, and the findings are located in exhibit B of the resolution. And the tenant map conditions of approval are located in exhibit C. And then we have the tentative map over this subdivision. And just like the previous project, it's uh, exempt from CEQA under the fifteen three three two infill exemption. And we also looked at it uh, for cumulative impacts under CEQA section fifteen three hundred point two, uh, and there were no cumulative impacts either. So with that, uh, staff would recommend uh, that the city council adopt a resolution approving a density bonus, major subdivision and tentative map for a five lot subdivision located at Evan Circle. And finding the project categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under CEQA Guidelines, section fifteen three three two. And I am still here for questions.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? Councilmember Clark?
Hey, Matt, same question as the last time. Are are we expecting these to go on the market for sale or?
I'm not as sure with this one. Um, I think we could maybe ask Architect Bill Kemp, but actually the property owner is not here tonight. He was here at the planning commission.
Okay.
So do you know the answer to that question, Bill?
Sure. And and also, since you're the architect, these floor plans are quite odd. I've never seen something like this before. It's like a duplex, but you're considering it to be an ADU instead of another unit?
Well, okay, so first of all, um, I'll just give you a little background on the project. The uh, the Wallace family's owned the property since about two thousand and six. They built out the previous seven homes um, right after the crash of two thousand and eight, and we had a, we had basically the same tentative map in at that time, but they never vested the map and made it final. So we're just kind of coming back to where we were ten, fifteen years ago. And um, they're um, they've held on to ownership, I believe, of one or two of the um, first uh, first seven units, and um, they're probably going to hold on to maybe one of these. Um, and they they they're in conversations with Habitat to actually have Habitat build their affordable unit as well. So that might be another another project for for Habitat while they're in the vicinity. Uh, so.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Other questions from council? All right, seeing no further questions from council, I will take it out to um, the public for public comment. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Going once, going twice. All right, I'm going to bring it back to council. Oh, go ahead. Now I'm just uh, want to make a motion to approve this item. All right, we have a motion and a second. And do we have any discussion before we take a roll call vote on this item? All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Mary, I also want to clarify the motion includes um, twelve C six and twelve C seven.
I just want to say, I just want to say one thing. I just like when we um, continue to add to our sales how in Watsonville. So that's why I really like this, because you're going to guarantee to sell the units, at least four of them, right? So.
I don't, I don't know that I have the ability to guarantee that, but I know that that for them to make this work financially, they are going to have to sell a substantial number of the units.
Great. And with we need more houses on the market, and I think this is good. So thank you.
All right, with that, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Clark?
Aye.
Dutra?
Aye.
Montesino?
Yes.
Porosco?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Salsido?
Aye.
Niqueros Carter?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much. All right, we are moving forward to item thirteen, new business, and we've got thirteen A study session on Watsonville Municipal Code, chapter fourteen dash four one. Drive-through facility restrictions, and we have another presentation from Principal Planner Orbach.
Lucky that I love to hear myself talk. Um, I'm going to start very high level tonight. So I am here to present Watsonville Municipal Code, chapter fourteen forty one, drive-through facility restrictions. Uh, but I want to start out with just a general comment about kind of where regulations come from. So city council, you guys, adopt ordinances which become part of the Watsonville Municipal Code, uh, which are meant to regulate development and all other activities city. And then planners such as myself and uh, Ivan Carmona, who was up here earlier, apply those codes to project applications. And sometimes property owners and developers are not happy um, when the code prohibits what they want to do on their properties. Um, so tonight, we're going to talk about one of those code sections that has recently caused some of that unhappiness. Um, chapter fourteen forty one, drive-through restrictions. Uh, I'm going to cover where it came from. I'm going to talk about what it says. I'm going to go over whether or not it is working as it was intended. Uh, and then at the end, uh, it would be nice if I could get some direction from you on any desired changes to this ordinance. So I'm going to start out with just the definition of drive-through facility as we define it in the Watsonville Municipal Code. So our code states that a drive-through facility shall mean any commercial use that conducts business in whole or part with a person or persons who enters a commercial property in a motor vehicle and transacts business from said motor vehicle from any location on such property that is not a designated parking space. Uh, we have had, uh, we have received multiple inquiries regarding uh, the development of new drive-through facilities uh, over the last several years. Uh, those have included uh, a diverse range of uses, including quick serve restaurants, including um, Starbucks, which you have seen very recently, uh, as well as Chick-fil-A, In-N-Out, Raising Canes, Dutch Brothers. Um, we've also had service stations with accessory car wash facilities and standalone car wash facilities such as Quick Quack. I wanted to give you an idea of what these recent proposals have looked like. So I grabbed a couple of uh, example site plans. Uh, the one at the bottom left here was for a quick serve restaurant. I believe this was Raising Canes, a fried chicken uh, quick serve restaurant. Um, that has a forty car queue uh, and forty one parking spaces on the site. The one at the upper right uh, is actually a combination of three parcels, which included uh, a quick serve restaurant with a forty five car queue and eighty eight parking spaces. A car wash with twenty four car queue and twenty four parking spaces, and a coffee shop with a twenty seven car queue and thirteen parking spaces, all right beside one another. Uh, and just for um, kind of visualization, uh, this is a map showing where those projects that were that were turned away due to the drive-through facility restrictions uh, were located. Uh, you'll notice that the majority of these requests were clustered around the Freedom Boulevard uh, and Green Valley Road intersection. Uh, and it's important to note that these were not prohibited just by the drive-through facility ordinance, but also by the airport safety compatibility zones associated with the crosswind runway. So you might ask yourself, well, you know, we do have a lot of drive-through facilities in Watsonville. Where are they? So I wanted to help you visualize that as well. Uh, and so our assistant planner, Alvaro Magid, I'll put this map together for me, uh, just so you can have an idea of where those uh, you drive through uses that are existing are located. Uh, and it's it's really telling because there are several clusters that really stand out here. So you have the Freedom Boulevard corridor. Uh, you have the Main Street corridor. And then you'll notice that the uh, East Lake is remarkably uh, they're they're absent from that quarter. Uh, and that's largely because of the close proximity to residential parcels and the fact that most of the commercial parcels along that stretch are not very deep. So a hundred and fifty foot setback doesn't allow for any of the parcel to fall within a buildable area for a drive-through facility. Um, so where did the ordinance come from? Um, there was a proliferation of drive-through facilities and formula chain businesses uh, in the late nineteen nineties. Uh, this led to a backlash against drive-through facilities that has continued through today. Uh, and I just wanted to throw a couple of just sort of, you know, almost all caps headlines at you that demonstrate kind of the passionate opinions in national media uh, regarding drive-through facilities and the and their impacts.
You know, uh, can I ask you a question? Yeah. Or actually a comment. I get where you're going, but it's a lot of comments, you know, a a a lot, uh, you know, uh, let's get to the substance, you know, uh, I'm more of a medium meat and potatoes kind of person. Um, like I said, these are a bunch of opinions and are we guys? Like I said, it's just that, uh, uh, I, I just, you know, the, the intention is to give us information, not, you know, uh, I, I've skewed viewpoint in my, and you're skewing the viewpoint in my.
I was just trying to demonstrate that there's some controversy.
Okay. Well, yeah, this is about your statement in the beginning and where you're going, you're skewing the viewpoint. So I just, you know, continue. But like I said, that's my point.
I think we're getting to the, the, I, I think we're getting some background. Councilmember Montesino, I think we're, we're getting there. We're, we're getting, we're getting there.
On giving the history of kind of where this came from and why it was developed, um, by the council at the time, which was in around two thousand. So around that same time period, many local jurisdictions took measures to limit or prohibit drive-through facilities. Um, there was Watsonville, City of Santa Cruz, City of Capitola, uh, as well as San Juan Batista, where I used to work, uh, and that one actually took it one step further and prohibited formula businesses entirely within their community. Uh, and that was with the goal of promoting and protecting local businesses that could be pushed out by large chains. Once again, that's just the facts and the findings of why those particular communities decided that this wasn't something for them.
I'm sorry, could the side conversation stop, please? Thank you.
Uh, so then specifically here in Watsonville, how it transpired was that in August, um, or in two thousand, city staff brought forward a drive-through facilities ordinance, uh, for review by planning commission and city council. Uh, and just as another demonstration of how there were very different feelings on August seventh, two thousand, the planning commission actually recommended denial of, uh, the ordinance to city council by a four oh three vote. Uh, but then on September twelfth of two thousand, the city council unanimously adopted the ordinance. So even between planning commission and city council, there was not a hundred percent agreement on it at the time. Uh, the findings that they made at the time for adopting it, uh, had to do with protecting existing neighborhood quality by reducing, uh, things like traffic, noise, odor and aesthetic impacts. And this is pulled straight from the findings for adoption. They also found that the location and design criteria represented good zoning practices. By, uh, adequately providing adequate spacing from residential properties, adequate screening from commercial streets, limits on light glare and noise, adequate stacking areas and limiting drive-through lanes, access to internal areas to prevent, um, circulation impacts on public streets. Uh, so what does the drive-through ordinance, uh, say specifically? The big one here that, that has come into play with most of the recent applications is the hundred and fifty foot setback from residential parcels. That's the first one you see here. Uh, they also got very specific about, um, drive-throughs not being located within two hundred feet of signalized intersections, and that's due to traffic impacts. And then they specifically called out, um, several, uh, gateway intersections that they also provided a three hundred setback, three hundred foot setback from, uh, that you can see listed here. Uh, they also required a special use permit so that these would require additional view. These wouldn't just go through with, you know, zoning administrator approval. They would have to go to the planning commission who could then, um, condition it if there were additional concerns about how the use may affect additional, uh, adjacent properties. They also developed a set of, uh, design criteria related to location of trash facilities, um, required mitigation for, uh, lighting, noise, fumes, rodents, et cetera. Uh, the impacts of proposed facility, facilities on adjoining residential uses, which I already mentioned, um, limiting adverse traffic impacts and safety hazards, uh, to both vehicles and pedestrians. Uh, there were some drive-through lane design standards and then landscaping standards. So in terms of why there is pushback against drive-throughs, um, those generally have to do with drive-through impacts related to health, such as noise, air quality emissions, fumes, light. It also, they also prioritize auto-oriented uses over bicycle and pedestrians in communities. Uh, there are impacts to traffic and walkability and safety hazards to pedestrians, bicycles and vehicles. Um, they, uh, don't necessarily comply with or are consistent with our climate action and adaptation plan in terms of smart growth concepts. Uh, and then there's an issue with underutilization of land in terms of, um, you know, that we don't have a whole lot as we, you know, we just went through the housing element update and identified vacant parcels within the city. Uh, most of the larger vacant parcels we have are commercial parcels. So, um, there's the issue with loss of limited vacant land that could be used for higher value economic development, infill residential development or mixed-use development. It's also potentially inconsistent with, um, general plan place making visions, uh, that have been developed so far based on what we've heard in terms of public input at all. The community meetings that have been held on the twenty fifty general plan update. And then, as I mentioned, Housing Element Table F nineteen, uh, identified all those vacant commercial sites, uh, not for this Rena cycle. Um, but just in case, uh, the city wanted to consider those in the next Rena cycle, uh, under development, uh, new state laws like AB twenty eleven. And this is the list of all those parcels. Uh, they could have a total potential housing yield, um, not including state density bonus law of, you know, almost three hundred housing units. I know that, uh, economic development is one of this council's, uh, main priorities based on the city council's strategic plan. This is actually your top priority. Economic impacts of new development vary greatly based on the type of land use with some generating a significant amount of tax revenue for the city and others producing very little. You know, as you know, the city receives revenue from multiple sources, sales tax, property tax, TOT taxes, and each land use has different impacts in each of these categories. Some of the high value economic development comes from land uses that generate significant amounts of these taxes. Hotels, for example, um, are great for cities because we get a hundred percent of the TOT tax generated. Car dealerships, popular restaurants, you know, can generate millions of dollars in sales with large amounts of associated sales taxes. Mixed-use developments even can be positive, net positive, combining higher assessed property values for residential development with, uh, sales tax revenue as well from the commercial components, uh, even when the additional cost of services are accounted for. Um, and then there are some like subscription services that don't generate sales tax. Um, this is something that if the council wished, we could really delve into further, um, you know, we have a general plan update team already working on, you know, uh, multiple levels of analysis of the city as part of that plan. Uh, and we do have an economic consultant that could look into this if the city council wanted to delve into which particular uses are higher value economic development opportunities for the city. Uh, so in summary, the drive-through ordinance is working as it was designed, um, in two thousand. By basically focusing on local, uh, and development. But in doing so, the ordinance has limited the establishment of drive-through uses in certain areas of the city. And some, but not all drive-through from developments could potentially bring in revenue to the city and support economic, the city's economic development goals, but it may come at a cost. So if the city council wishes to take a closer look at chapter fourteen, forty-one, staff could bring back a full report covering the positive and negative impacts of drive-through facilities and are exploring potential modifications to the drive-through ordinance. You know, this, uh, we didn't really get a request for this from anyone in particular. So just, you know, brainstorming, there are many options that you guys could repeal the ordinance. There, it could be a reduction in the required setbacks. Uh, you can consider exempting certain, um, revenue, city revenue generating land uses from the drive-through ordinance requirements. Uh, you could also exempt certain commercial zoning districts from the drive-through ordinance requirements. If you wanted to look at, for example, thoroughfare commercial, uh, which is the CT zoning district, uh, because that zone actually covers both of those areas that were circled with the existing drive-through uses. And, uh, could continue to do so, you know, in other areas of the city as well. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions from council? Councilmember Salcedo?
Thank you very much. Could you go back to the, the map that shows where places were denied? Those three, I think there were, were there circles on there too, or was it?
This is the denial one.
Oh, the denial. Okay.
The other one is the circles.
Okay. And then. Got it. And then could you go back to the denial area?
Yep.
Would there be a way we can incorporate basically the two areas that have those drive-throughs and East Lake? Like, would there be something that could, um, incorporate all three of those main areas?
Yes. I mean, you have the power to.
Right. What I'm asking is the, the zoning that you've mentioned is that, does that encompass everybody in the, what we're talking about, East Lake? You mentioned a, a modification of those.
Sorry, I don't, I don't have one in front of me, but most of the stretch in the red circle is, is adjacent to Freedom Boulevard is CT. So that's thoroughfare commercial. Large sections of Main Street and the other red circle are zone CT. And then s- the only part of, uh, the green circle that's Z, he is the East Lake Village Shopping Center. But that's not to say that, you know, other parcels in that area couldn't be rezoned to the CT as well.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, I'm sorry, were you finished with your question? Okay. So I have a couple of questions. So, um, my, my first question is about the East Lake parcel. Um, so part of that is in my district and I know part of that is owned by Caltrans. Would that present problems if we wanted to open that up, um, to drive-throughs?
The restrictions already, um, have pretty good standards related to queuing that would prevent queues from extending out into the, the highway section. So I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay. Um, and then my second question, my last question, um, is can you go back to the list of parcels? So these parcels are these, these are consistent with the current, um, restrictions that we have in place or are they not? These are available for drive-throughs or I was looking on that.
It would depend. Uh, so this is a comprehensive list of all the vacant commercial parcels that were analyzed as part of the housing element update.
Okay.
Um, so as you'll see in the sixth column, um, you'll see the zoning, the current zoning. Some of those districts would allow drive-through facilities with special use permits, um, and some of them were not. So, uh, right now, I believe CNS is, it would only allow it with a, uh, with a service station as an accessory to a service station. And that's basically, uh, just for car washes. Downtown Watsonville specific plan area will not allow drive-throughs period. Um, so that wouldn't be allowed in that area, but, but some of the other ones, as I mentioned, CT, CN, um, they could be allowed. Yes.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Um, that was all my questions. Uh, uh, let's see. I think we had, or Clark, did you know, uh, Councilmember Dutcha?
Um, thank you. Thanks for your report. I mean, I think, I, I see the, I feel the, I don't know if tension is the word, but, um, it, it is quite a really a frustrating topic, to be honest with you, because I do feel that we're being held back. And this is something that was created in two thousand and we're now in two thousand and twenty-four. So I'm glad it's been brought to us because it's taken over two decades for us to readdress this. But, um, and with the, we're going to be supposed, all supposed to be in electric cars soon, right? So the, the idling car situation, um, to me i- is, it's, um, it should be moot. So, you know, um, but, uh, I do have a question in regard to, um, you, you, you made a comment saying that, you know, some of these, these, these properties would have better use. And to me, it feels, it makes me feel like the city is maybe trying to dictate what's going on people's personal property. When they bring us a project, are we turning these projects away because we feel there's a better use for these people?
No, the, the projects that were turned away as part of this didn't comply with the code. And that's why I started out by saying the code is adopted by council, city just applies the code. So that, and that's why we're here tonight because it's to look at the code that's twenty-four years old and see if you feel the same way the council did in two thousand, or whether you'd like to make modifications to that, that we will then apply throughout the city.
Right. I, because I just, I find we're going down a slippery slope. We start saying, we feel there's a better use for a prop, for a, 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 you use the word. So I was just.
Well, there, there are higher value economic development opportunities, um, and you as council do have the power to decide which ones of those you prioritize.
Okay.
And you can do that through the zoning.
Well, I feel like we're really hurting when it comes to economic development. I'm probably not the only one up here that feels that way. I feel like we're, we're stuck. Honestly, I feel we're stuck in this town where we can't move that, take that next step forward. And maybe this is part of the problems because we're dealing with an ordinance that's really outdated. Have you looked at other ordinances in regard to setbacks in other cities to see, because I'm, I'm thinking of others. I've, I've traveled a lot. Thinking right now in, in, in Los Angeles, there's a car wash and there are literally connected to the car wash, six, seven, eight floor, um, buildings right there, but we have different, it sounds like we're completely different than their, than their building standards.
That's correct. And, and I don't believe the hundred fifty feet was based on any scientific studies or surveys. And, you know, Capitola has a hundred feet, you know, um, San Juan Batista decides has a straight prohibition, but, um, you know, you, you are the ones who get to decide that based on what you hear from your members and constituents in the community and what they're willing to accept. So.
I'm glad you just said Capitola as a, it's a hundred feet, right? So we're kind of, it's so to me, I feel like we need to redo, we need to, we need to address this and, and redo it, you know, and we need to look at other cities. Capital is a hundred. You know what Santa Cruz is? Santa Cruz is.
I, I, all I did was look to see if they had one and they did. I, I didn't get into the details, but they do have restrictions.
I mean, those are, those are important numbers, and I think that's something we definitely need to address. Um, and I guess my other question is, will we, when we were giving out these, because there are businesses in the community that are within a hundred and fifty feet from housing. And, um, how did we come like, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna just say it. The McDonald's on Main Street, right? That was a spe- I, how did that come to happen? Like, how did that happen?
I'm going to defer to the city manager and the city attorney on that.
No, no, housing is literally on the dry pole. I did.
All right.
We, we found the culprit. It was Eduardo.
It was a variance. Well, that's why we need to change it. So you don't do variances all the time. Yeah.
That, that's exactly what the night's discussion is about. I mean, this is, this is, this was established in two thousand. To the point that like back in that time, like you see some of the background. If the council feels this ordinance is not serving us well today, as a matter of fact, Matt will be the first one to, to admit and share with you that as part of our general plan, Watsonville will embark in some major cleanup of ordinances that need to be updated, that really need to reflect the spirit of these councils' economic development desire. And we are going to be doing a lot of that in, in the next coming months. This is one. This is one example. So the question is, we, we are happy to bring it back with some recommendations based on directions. So tonight comes, tonight's conversation is not for you to take action, but simply to give us feedback into what is the community, what is the community that you're intending to build? If you, if you remove it altogether, yes, there are several parcels, as you can see, that could become drive-throughs and they could become fast food, uh, restaurants. Is that the community that the council will want? Is that economic development you want? You, you just, I'm not placing value in my question. I'm just saying that is what, that is the question in front of you. So if we look back twenty years ago, the council that put this in place, it's achieved the result that was intended back then. What is the result we want to see, um, in coming years? That's the question.
We're being forced to become a, a mini city, right? Because we're not allowed to build outside of the urban, the urban city limit lines. So that changes how we grow within the city of Watsonville, right? The, the voters basically are forcing us to grow a certain way because we're not allowed to grow out at all. So.
That is good.
And this is going to be, and, and the fact that we have to build, we have Rena numbers to, 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 to reach and, um, you know, the, the public wants growth. I mean, there are, there are things that a lot of people leave town to go do because we can't offer it here, right? I mean, I think I saw a car wash on there, right? I have to go to Capitola to get my car washed because there is not a car wash that I can go to that offers the services like that. Splash. So I mean, to me, I think we need to look at the setbacks. Um, I think, and, and I think look, bring it back from other cities, kind of maybe see what cities are more, have a more modern approach to the, to it and, and bring us back ideas. That's my opinion. I'm not, I mean, I'm.
So, um, if, if, if I may, Councilmember Parker, um, so it sounds like I, I don't think. So if, if, if I may, Councilmember Parker, so it sounds like I, I don't think we're ready to give direction tonight. I don't want to speak for the whole, whole council, council. But I wanted to suggest, it sounds like I, I really like the idea of bringing this back with a full report to have more information. To see, you know, which parcels to visually be able to see what we could do and what it would potentially get us, right? Because economic development is one of our, it's, that's our top priority. But we also have to think about some of the impact. I'd love to have it in and out. But would I love to have an in and out that's going to block our main streets? Maybe not. So you know, I think, I think we need a deeper dive on this. Personally, I'm not ready to, to give direction tonight. So, Councilmember Parker?
Thank you. Okay. I have factual questions for you to help him. CT, what does that mean and what, what can be in CT for the public as well as for all the rest of us?
So thoroughfare commercial is a zoning district that is designed to be utilized by auto-oriented uses. So that's one that would be fitting for things like drive-through facilities.
What? I'm sorry?
It's auto-oriented.
Auto-oriented.
It would lend itself well. That's actually why when I was brainstorming this, that came to mind, looking at the zoning map and going, well, if that's where they are already and it's a zoning district that is designed to cater to auto-oriented uses, seems, seems like a fit.
Okay. What is CNS?
Neighborhood Shopping Center.
And what's that about?
That is more smaller scale, less auto-oriented, more pedestrian oriented, adjacent to residential areas. Similar to neighborhood commercial, which is CN. So you know, some of these zoning districts, especially along Eastlake are CN for the most part, except for the little.
Okay, what's CN?
Neighborhood Commercial. Those are the very not deep, shallow. Thank you. The shallow parcels that wouldn't lend themselves well to drive-throughs anyway, for the most part, along the sort of elbow area there of Eastlake.
Like the McDonald's, I mean?
No, I mean.
Yeah, I know. I was being sarcastic. Keep going.
I just don't know how you.
That wasn't a fact. I cut myself off.
How you'd wind a 20-car queue around on one of those. So that, those are, those are a little bit more difficult, but the parcels along Freedom Boulevard and the parcel along Main Street tend to be deeper and could lend themselves to that type of development.
Okay. And CV?
See.
CV?
The visitor commercial.
Visitor.
Is also a little bit more auto-oriented and designed for not necessarily our local residents, like the neighborhood commercial and the neighborhood shopping center, but for people who would be coming here from somewhere else to shop, passing through, want to stop and get some services or, you know, a burger.
I do agree with the mayor. I, I don't think we're educated enough to make some really good changes. 24 years ago is a different world. So I want to ask some more questions because I do think that that should be where we go. Can we go to back where you were talking about how we're negatively impacting the, possibly the, the plan? Our, our general plan?
This one on the bottom.
Yeah. Inconsistent with general plan, place-making vision based on public input. Is that right? That's similar to when the gentleman came and they presented and they had the Elks Club partitioning their land and putting other stuff on there. So I'm just trying to get that in my head that that's the same presentation.
Yeah. And if you have, you know, specific questions, the interim community development director, Justin Meek is here, who's heading up that effort and can get a little bit more into kind of the.
No, I'm just asking that generally if I'm identifying that I don't have any. So we're looking safety hazard. This is, this is something that we all talked about and that's my district, District Seven. And we have a lot of seniors there and they don't ride bikes. They do walk, but they don't walk super long distances. And we are a very much auto-oriented, regardless of what they'd like to think or say, area. I mean, we are, and that's, that's what we do over there. So that's why I think the changes in, in some of these zoning areas are different than they were 20 years ago, 25 years ago. That's something we need to look at. What about mitigations to, we have a few places that have variances, right? And so they've built closer than 150 or 300 feet or whatever it is. There's a few of those in town, correct?
I believe there's McDonald's.
And at least one more.
I think there was one small service station, drive-through car wash along Eastlake that was allowed.
That's in my district too.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, but, but it serves the community and it does well, but is there a mitigation? They didn't have any mitigations on those variances that they gave for those?
The variance on the McDonald's was related to the setback from the intersection. There was actually nothing related to the setback from residential.
Okay. So, but setback from residential has a lot to do with sound, right? And interference with living on the, that side in the residential area.
Fumes light, that's.
Yeah, right. Okay. So I, I really think that's important and that we should think about adding those mitigations to something that we're, we're looking at so that, you know, and, and the fact is 150, if Capitola has 100 and they don't have any really, well, I don't even think, I'd like to look at their variances as well and see where they've gone. But that's what I would like to see. And you have one, that one that had every address in the world on it. We don't have that in our presentation.
I think I added that today just to have it as another visual. This is actually in the housing element. It's the, it's almost the very last part of Appendix F. Actually is the last part of Appendix F.
You'll send us the new version? So we have this as well? That'd be great. And, and then go back a little bit because I saw something else I wanted to ask. Really one last question. Keep going, keep going. Maybe you went to, maybe that one. What was the point of this? Could you tell me? Because other than to really sway us, I mean, I don't know who, who was saying that we don't want an in and out burger? Because I mean, I've been inundated by young and old. You know, they want an in and out burger and they want drive-throughs. I mean, I understand that, you know, and we talked about, you know, leaky cars, but we have electric cars and we have more of those here as too. So I'm trying to figure out where, is this what you're saying the people that, that wrote the original one were thinking? Or is this, because this looks fairly recent. This one's at 2023.
These were to demonstrate the ongoing controversy surrounding drive-through facilities. Wasn't, once again.
I hear you.
Any particular position? I mean, clearly, trust me, we are working very hard to get an in and out burger here somewhere in the city. I mean, we have looked at so many parcels. So I can understand that. That's one of the reasons why I picked an image that had in and out in it. So I get the impression that you thought this was for negativity, but this was truly.
It's a little bit national queer for me, but yeah.
Controversial in communities all across the country. So.
My, my students are big on Chick-fil-A, just so you know. Never been there myself, but they are huge on it.
Yeah.
So yeah, I don't, I don't know. Yeah. I just didn't get this. It kind of, you know, changed my outlook of just listening to the facts and notwithstanding you making a comment about it. That's fine. But I want to thank you for giving it a shot. And, and we're really nice, Matt. I just want you to know we're nice people.
I, I do not.
Even though we're picking at your thing.
I, I embrace my role of applying the code as you folks.
I hear you.
To adopt it. So that's why, you know, in my discussions with, you know, city manager, you did this on this. I mean, it's all about, let's just get the code that gets what your constituents want. And then we will apply it across.
And so we just need, and I agree with the mayor a hundred percent. We need more in-depth information on all of this and what's going on around cities our size, you know? And that'd be great. Thank you.
Councilmember Clark?
I want to piggyback off of what my colleagues have said. I'm, I'm all about looking into this and doing more research. But can we also kind of put a timeline on this? You know, I, I don't want this to come back like summer of next year, right? Like if we could do, well, not November, not December, but January, right? I mean, like really.
We.
Yeah, like.
Our next item is requests. You can request it.
Okay. But I'm like, I can actually request that and it doesn't go off into the ether, right?
We, we were trying to be suspicious and that is the reason why this item is in front of you tonight. What we were hoping for is instead of coming back for more studying, we can come back with some options. Therefore, you know, like I, I understand you might want to study it, but if we bring back another study session with, we, we can go back studied if you convey to us, what would you like to achieve or what would you like, what options do you like us to bring back? So.
I'm not, I don't feel that we know that yet. And I don't think we have enough in information to know what options we want. So I, I would like to see a full presentation brought back. Councilmember Montesino?
Yeah, no, I, I, I agree. But like I said, you know, look at other communities like ours. Don't give me Santa Cruz, because Santa Cruz doesn't have, you know, barely any drive-throughs. So you know, and they're very liberal. When they did this, there were, in those years, we're not there. We're in, you know, we're, you know, for us, we're families, we're, we're trying to get to jobs. We're trying to hurry. We're, it's just our demographic is very different from, so like I said, when you bring back some information, bring back some information that's really relevant, you know, to sort of our, our, you know, hemisphere communities.
Councilmember Salsito?
I am a little concerned that we're kind of thinking of direction for additional staff reports before we've heard from the public. There are business owners that are here that have really been impacted by this ordinance that have waited years for it to shift. And we need to hear from those community members before really saying, let's kick the can down the road again. I would be open to a staff report with, I'm prepared to give direction. I would like a way for the three areas that you circled on the map to have that ordinance repealed. So Eastlake, Freedom in Maine, that's the majority of the areas where we are seeing these commercial in and out, you know, those types of things that could develop. If there is a way for those three areas to be exempted in a reasonable way, right? I know rezoning can be a huge headache. So how can we streamline rezoning if we need to rezone? But I am for repeal the ordinance. I would like to give that direction again with a full staff report. If we need to come back with further clarifying details, but I believe that this is causing real harm to our landowners, to our investors, to business owners. And I'm really willing to take a look at all of the information, but also with an eye of, hey, let's make this functional in our community. I think we lose face and credibility when there is no actual explanation for how something like McDonald's got a variance, right? I mean, that's, that's the bottom line. We, we don't have, we have certain projects that have gotten exemptions that don't make a lot of sense. And then other projects are denied. Well, that speaks to the infeasibility, if you will, or inapplicability of this ordinance. So we're, we're making, you know, these types of winged exceptions for certain businesses while denying others. We don't want to do that. And so I think that that's a, a, a good way. Let's listen to everything, but let's figure out my, my request, my direction would be, let's figure out those three specific areas that you circled and you identified and how to get those areas. And I think that's a reason, it's not a full repeal of the ordinance, but it's a partial repeal based off what we have in front of us or where drive-throughs are located, where can we reasonably put them?
So public comment was our next, our next step. I was just about to get there. I would not be in favor of that. I, I just don't think that this, I appreciate this, the, you know, quickness of this report, but I don't think that it gave us enough, enough information to make decisions or to, or to give direction today, because I would want to see more, you know, about the impacts and how it could positively and negatively impact and what kind of businesses and just a lot more information that I think is missing. So that, that's what I think. All right. Any other comments from council before we go out to public comment? Councilmember Parker?
I, I agree with Councilwoman Salsito's direction about those three corridors. And I think that's perfectly apropos if we want to talk about changing zoning issues to make that work. That's what we should do. Thank you.
Councilmember Dutra?
I also agree with them, you know, with those three corridors to repeal at this point. So I'm ready to give direction in certain ways.
Me too.
I thought we were not giving direction until we heard from the public. That's what I heard. All right. I'm going to take it out to public comment. Would anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for being open. Oh, sorry. Okay. Good evening. Thank you, city council members and city staff for preparing this. I wanted to thank you for embarking in this journey. And I think, I don't know who was in representing our, you know, the constituents of the city of Watsonville in the year 2000. I can't remember off the back, right? But the fact, thank you, Councilmember Dutra for saying it's 24 years old, right? I think they might've had good intentions, but it's antiquated. And it's, it saddens me to know that people, when you said that you turned away businesses and applicants, that means that was city revenue that we lost, right? That's a lot of money. And then just thinking about if there's nothing is done and this is kicked down the road, how many more businesses and applicants, applications are you guys going to turn away, right? And formerly in, in education and the students have been asking for change, for more businesses, for them to be able to buy clothes here and to be able to shop here. And it's 9:38, I'm assuming they're at home doing homework. But the kids would be here to voice their, my kids, I'm sorry, young adults and community members to be able to voice their, their opinion. If you were to say when you're going to bring it on, on, on the agenda, I'm sure we could pack the house, right? They could write letters to you guys. So I hope you're in favor of allowing the city of Watsonville to grow, right? So we have revenue that stays here. So thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Martha Victoria Vega. Sorry.
Thank you. Would anyone else from, can, can we continue, please? Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak on this item? Please come to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, Raheem Farhat, business owner, District Seven. Councilmember Salsito, I appreciate what you said about the three different locations and even those who spoke about the 24-year ordinance that's there, specifically with the Eastlake Avenue side, the east side, where there's nothing there. So there is no influx of housing going on and the lots that have sat dormant and vacant for years. There is nothing being built there. So I think looking on it in those areas would make sense. I mean, with the passing of the minimum wage laws for fast food restaurants, which is more than the state minimum wage laws, there's also, I mean, employment opportunities for the youth who, while they're working and trying to get better jobs. So I think moving forward and, and bringing it to today's standards and where it should be for our community makes the most sense. So thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak on this item? Welcome.
Thank you, staff and council for taking the time for this study session. Councilwoman Parker touched on this before, but my understanding of the ordinance, the way it's written right now, is that it's a straight prohibition and that there's no room for making this at the discretion of planning commission or city council. If there's a violation of one of the, one of the codes. So for example, we have a property on Freedom Boulevard. We, we happen to think it's a very good candidate for a, a drive-through. We've actually got a very interested drive-through tenant that would like to come in, but we are violating the 150-foot setback requirement. And my understanding is that it is a straight prohibition. There is no opportunity to ask for a variance or some, you know, we think there's some mitigating factors in our case. But perhaps that's the option that council considers is maybe not changing the ordinance whatsoever, but at least having some discretion on whether something might be acceptable instead of having just a straight prohibition. Thank you. uh, having some discretion on whether something might be acceptable instead of having just a straight prohibition. Thank you.
Thanks. Uh, would anyone else from the public like to speak on this item? Welcome.
Uh, good evening, William Hanson. I'm here, uh, representing Pacific Coast Development. I don't really want to get into the chronological history of a, a specific project that we have over the last two and a half years. Um, and, and I will say that we are led by, and I'm not going to name any names of planners or assistants or directors, but, uh, we submitted a, a, a payment of twenty-eight thousand to the city to change the zoning and we were told to do that because then we were going to be able to have the drive-throughs for the two tenants that we're, um, in contract with. But since I only have an hour or a minute and twenty seconds left, I'll just say this. Um, the Eastlake corridor is severely underserved. It's not appropriate to, um, hold. There was a comment about better economic uses. And I'm just curious to whom that would apply because we've held that property for 21 years and we haven't been able to secure either mixed use, residential. And the two tenants that we have that are proposed for the project right now are already anxious and willing. They're national tenants. They have the ability to employ people. I have a three-minute video, but I can't play it, but I'd love to do that. We're on schedule for planning next month. And we will probably either, you know, get stamped. It depends on what you folks do, because if you folks allow those three areas, then, um, economic development could succeed in the city of Watsonville. But without that, um, it's basically kind of a discrimination scenario. We've got McDonald's and we have two residential homes on each side of it. We have the car wash on Eastlake right down the street. So we're just asking for some action. Otherwise, we're going to lose the tenant and I'm going to lose my speaking time at one minute.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak on this item?
Department of Health, District One. So I consult with quick serve restaurants and they use technology all the time to improve any types of backup that they have on streets. If you go to Chick-fil-A or In-N-Out, they're doing this all the time, addressing the articles that you have here. They also would make a lot more money with drive-throughs because as, uh, Eduardo Montesino talked about, people are busy. They have families, they have to get to their jobs. Drive-throughs matter. And people are not even, they're doing online ordering and picking up in drive-throughs. If you're not, if you're going to throttle that type of development, you'll hurt your QSR development in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to speak on this item? All right, seeing no one else from the public, I'm going to bring it back to council. Um, all right, so I heard council would like to bring back these three items, was that correct? These three areas?
Um, I believe City Manager Vidas has a suggestion.
All right, this is my active listening. Hopefully I did okay. I heard, uh, council might be interested in, um, a planning staff to look at, um, if there is any variances that could be brought back for consideration. Um, we've also discussed about perhaps, uh, revising the setbacks and coming back with you more information about what that that implied, the implications of reducing setbacks if possible. Uh, we talked about zoning, uh, in those areas and perhaps focusing, uh, allowing drive-throughs in certain areas within those three greens, uh, red, two red circles and the green circle. Uh, there was one more. One more item. What was it? Hey, when? Yes, I'll come back with me. But I, I think, I believe those are three things that I heard clearly that the council is interested in exploring.
No, uh, the, it was the, uh, I don't think we were limiting uh, in those three areas. We're trying to focus, uh, zoning changes so that if, um, that we would be able to develop that in those three areas, but is that right?
Change it to commercial thoroughfare. Yeah, yeah.
So zoning in those areas.
Yes. So that could either be achieved by a repeal of the ordinance of those three areas or a shift in the zoning such that those three areas with a shift in the zoning could have the, the one hundred and fifty feet presented. They'd be able to have drive-throughs. Yeah.
We can study and bring back.
Wait, we could definitely study that and bring, bring you back a report on like the implications of that. And then like with that understanding, then you can make a decision. My next question is, is that something you want to study back at the council or would you like us to take these three items and bring them to the planning commission to bring back a recommendation to the council? So that's.
So I, I just want to make sure we're saying the same thing. Because this ordinance lives in the zoning code, assuming it does, yes. Um, any changes to the ordinance have to go to the planning commission first for consideration and recommendation to the council. So I think the question that City Manager Vidas was asking was, would the council like to bring a draft of the ordinance to the council first so that you can weigh in on it? It would then go to the planning commission for recommendation. Then it would come back to you for first reading, second reading. That's option A. Or option B, would you like staff to take your direction from this meeting and just go straight to the planning commission?
I think what, um, City Attorney Zeller said, to come to us, then back to planning, then, what do you all think? Yes, okay. Yeah. Um, and one thing I just, this just came into my head as we were, um, listening. I remember very vividly, like in the early two thousands, because I was in high school and I loved drive-throughs and fast food and all that. But I remember that one of the reasons that drive-throughs, they did put some of these limitations was because of the concern of, um, obesity and, you know, health, because a lot of the children were just eating fast food. Um, and that was a huge concern. So I recall that was one of the, the biggest, um, issues with um, drive-throughs is that it was kind of a deterrent for, for children, uh, and families to eat fast food. So um, I didn't hear anybody else bring that up, so I just wanted to bring that up. Uh, councilmember Dutra?
Thank you. I, was there, um, an issue with the airport zoning that here as well? With this, that, that would affect some of this? So how do you plan on getting around that?
That's an entirely different issue. So, so that, that, yeah.
But at least that opens. So, because I'm saying that Freedom Boulevard is going to become, even if we repeal or whatever, Freedom, Freedom Boulevard is still going to be held up. Um, my concern is I heard there were two people out here talking about active projects in the, in the, in the line, in line. I want those to move forward. I don't want to like go study for two months, then come back and then go back. No, no, they, that, he just said wait for two and a half years. I mean, that, we have to move faster. So what can we do to get the projects? I don't know what project he has, but, um, we need them moving.
I, I, I just want to issue a friendly reminder to the council that it's possible that any appeals on this project either way could come to the council. So I'd just like to caution the council to not make any decisions about any particular project.
No, I'm not. Generally, I said there are projects in the, in the line. And I don't want to hold up any of these projects that are in line for moving forward. We have to be, we have to do better. You know, so, um, a- and, and then I, I heard that we turned, turned, turned away a bunch of businesses. That was the first of me hearing that tonight. And that's, that's upsetting that we've turned away a ton of businesses.
It could be upsetting to find out tonight, but it is, um, a good practice that your planners are applying your code. The fact that this study session came together in less than two weeks and I want to thank, um, Principal Planner Orbach for really picking this item up and, and bringing this study session tonight. Uh, that is, um, as quickly as we could act and thank you, Matt, uh, for.
Yeah, I think this is saying a lot to your new leadership and I appreciate that. But I also just did hear a comment, except for McDonald's, right? So they, you know, they are, we are applying it when we want to apply it, right? So that, we have to really start creating, you know, ways that we can start moving these businesses forward. I don't want, I don't want to be losing any more businesses.
May I, Mayor?
Mayor Pritchett?
Uh, just to, uh, speak to the comments, what would be the timeframe? Because we would want it back to council as soon as possible. So as far as timeframe, I kind of want to set the expectation that this is something that council wants to prioritize sooner than later. So are we thinking January? Are we thinking we can do something in December? When would it be going to planning? When would it be coming back to us? Well, I heard you wanted to pre-study it before we take it to planning, which will then add an additional step to the process, but that's fine if that's the wish of the council. We'll bring it back to you with some options. I would think, uh, based on, um, other projects that, uh, staff is working on, January will be the first opportunity that we can bring it back.
All right, um, councilmember Clark?
Can I take echo what councilmember Dutras, uh, stated earlier? There were comments earlier about existing projects, whatever they may be. Um, so you know, since McDonald's was given a variance, though, we don't know why or who gave it to them. I mean, are these options that people who are looking to do projects right now can request and actually be heard and they may be granted? Or do we not know? Because since we don't know how McDonald's got theirs, we can't really grant one for anybody else. Or I mean, I, I'm kind of lost.
You, you need findings to grant a variance.
Okay.
Right? So it will be just being able to, to make those arguments for a variance to be granted. Uh, we don't believe based on our code that there are, is criteria for granting, uh, variances on the projects that we know of today.
And, and a variance is an administrative action or that goes to planning commission? Or how does one do that?
Planning commission.
Planning commission.
It is planning commission. Okay. So they.
Correct. That's why.
So, so, but I mean, how does one start that process? I'm just curious. I mean, so it has to go through the planning department first?
Are you talking about for variance?
Huh? Yeah.
Yeah, they would apply for a variance. There's an application.
Okay. And then if someone does, do you automatically let it go to the planning commission or is there a whole process where administratively they decide yes or no?
Yeah, I mean, it would, it would be paired with the rest of the existing project and go to planning commission with a recommendation from staff. Um, and the recommendation right now, because of the drive-through ordinance, I, well, we can't get into specific projects, but it would be.
Yeah, no, I don't want.
Whatever else we go with that project, it would get a recommendation from staff. Planning commission would either, you know, go with the staff recommendation or make alternative findings if they felt the opposite way about the special circumstances on the site and the, that it's not a grant of special privilege. Um, and then, you know, you would either be approved based on that. Um, or if they appealed staffs and then the applicant appealed, then it would.
Then it goes to council. Yeah. Okay. Huge long process, but okay, but it all starts with you.
Well, as, as people mentioned, one of these projects is on the next, uh, or second planning commission meeting from now, so, uh, November nineteenth.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that.
Sorry, are we?
Councilmember Salsito?
Um, I just wanted to clarify what my comment was, which was, I don't feel the need to have any more, um, information. But in, in the spirit of compromise, I said, I would like to have these three areas. Um, th- these designated areas, the zoning removed or zoning changed. So these three areas can have it parallel to, or at the same time as any additional information that other council members might want. Um, I'm just trying to avoid multiple meetings for us to meet about this. Like if we meet again and we have to give you direction again, I, I don't, I think that's a waste of time. So I think, I think timing is critical. I heard at least four people echo my um, request. So I, I'm just specifying at the next time we discuss this, I'd like solutions for how to, um, get these three areas. Um, the repeal of that ordinance in these three specific areas and any additional research, uh, or information or report that count, that, you know, other council members would like. Uh, but I think hearing from the dais, there was a vast majority of us sort of ready for these three areas to not have this hundred and fifty-foot setback for these types of uh, drive-throughs. So I'm trying to get it done as quickly as possible, but also provide the information. Is that helpful to staff? Yeah.
Yes, but I do want to point out, um, that these are just, this is an art project. This are ovals drawn on an image and PowerPoint by me. Um, within those ovals, the zoning is not consistent along those corridors. So it would be very helpful for you to see which parcels are actually zoned CT currently, which ones are not, and decide whether there's enough CT there where it meets your goal, or whether you may want to actually include some other zoning districts along those same corridors. And if, and if it really is all three of our main commercial corridors, then the question becomes, well, are there certain areas where we really just don't want these? Because then we just sort of invert it and say, okay, look, they're not allowed, for example, in the downtown specific plan, but they're allowed everywhere else. Because I mean, otherwise, I mean, in, going by this image, you'd have one stretch of Green Valley be pretty much the only place in town that couldn't have them. And so.
I leave those details in your capable hands, but I think.
But that's what I mean though, because that leans more towards a full repeal. So that's what I'm saying. If, if, and that's why I want to get specific feedback on those zoning districts, because if the CT zone's not enough and you really do want to just throw off the, the chains, then we can do that. And I just want to get that, because then that can go much faster, because really, you're right, that requires no analysis. You could just say, bring it back to us with just a repeal of this ordinance. We can just bring back, you know, redlined, chapter fourteen forty-one just disappears and, and that's fast. So.
Yeah, it's more of a, a thought that if, if it's compatible and straight up, and it would be to change the thing, then we change the zoning in those corridors. To fit what we're talking about. Yeah, that's.
I, I want to appreciate the challenge that we have and it's something that, um, Matt and I discussed in advance of tonight's discussion. Not really knowing the will of the council, it's hard for staff to bring something that we have implemented successfully in the spirit of the two thousands, right? So now we're hearing you. So now I feel confident that departing this meeting tonight, Matt and the team can dive in into doing a better, more concrete research that could come back and really dive in into the implications. And then if we say, okay, in those ovals, this is what it means and this is what we recommend. So I think that will be the next layer of, um, research that we have to do. And we will be glad to bring it back. I mean, as soon as possible. It's just that in the time of the year that we're in, with the agendas that we have planned ahead of us, uh, we, we, it really is January, um, when is the most feasible next time. Now, if you wanted to save time, we could bring that research to the planning commission and bring to you a closer recommendation to an ordinance that will save one step. That is the only thing I can offer in, in the spirit of saving time. But if the council wants to hear it first, that's absolutely fine.
Yeah.
Councilmember Parker?
Thank you. Um, I, I thought Councilwoman Salsito's, uh, statement was really clear. I thought all the rest of us that made it said is really super clear. I understand you're saying January. I'm not adverse to January, but I think it needs to come back to us because we know what we meant by what we were saying. And, and our vision of what it is, and then it, and then at that point, that draft can go to the planning commission to see, you know, whatever impact that has on them and let them make their own independent decision. But, um, I, I don't, I don't see that there's strange issues with this. I think we were pretty directive about it and.
I'm confused because we want to go fast, but we want to add an extra step. I, I don't really understand that.
Well, because we're the ones who actually.
But it sounds like our city manager understands what we want. So why are we going to add an extra step? If you're pushing for it to be quick, then why are we not taking our recommendation?
Mayor, if, if, if I may, um, the item was agendized in a particular manner to allow you to make motions. I think if there's question as to whether it should go to planning or come back to council, um, you can kind of take that decisive action. And then I can do a roll call and we get a better feel for that.
Excellent. Would anyone like to make a motion?
So the, the motion would be to have this item come directly to council. So four meetings total. Let's do three. So what would go to planning commission, they come back to council for first reading.
Yes.
Come back to council for second reading for approval and that's it. So that's my motion.
All right. I'll second that.
So my motion is as follows. To have this item be heard, be heard by the planning commission, then brought to council for the first reading and then be brought to council again for the second reading for approval.
Well, if, if you're proposing an ordinance change, we're going to need
Clerk, would you please clarify the motion?
If I may, for procedural reasons, the motion is to direct staffs to review the, the suggestions by council, come up with some recommendations to the planning commission and then come back to council for a first and second reading of the new ordinance.
Give direction to staff based on council feedback tonight, prepare a draft ordinance to take to the planning commission for recommendation to the council for amendments to the ordinance. Great. Okay. So is that your motion? Mayor Potem? Thank you.
All right. May we have?
The motion is second? Do we need a second?
We can get back to the meeting when you stop talking over everyone. Thank you. Councilmember Parker? Councilmember Parker? Yes, I seconded.
So the discussion was, I'm going to vote no on this because that's not what the majority of the board of the council was talking about. It comes back to us. Okay. So I'm going to vote no on this. Make it short.
Councilmember Dutra?
I have a question. This takes, requires two readings, right? So if we made a change in the first reading, we don't need to do two more readings. We could just make that change and it's done the second, right? Okay, then I'm okay with that.
As long as that
Depends, it depends on how significant the change is. There's a chance that it would need to go back to the planning commission. It depends on how significant the change is.
Okay. So yeah, that's what I'm trying to avoid, but I thought maybe if we can make the change after the first one, I just don't want to have to go all the way back to the planning commission. If we decide that we're not supportive of that, then it's, we lose time. Sorry.
Other comments before we take a vote?
Yes, the acoustics tonight are really terrible. There's been times I cannot hear you. So I am trying to get clarification as to what was said, and I don't appreciate that attitude. So I'm happy to stop when you are speaking, but I can't hear you. So that's why I'm trying to understand what we're saying.
We have a roll call, please.
Clark? Dutra?
No.
Montesino?
No.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Parker?
No.
Salsido?
No.
Quiros Carter?
Aye.
The motion fails.
All right. We'd like to make another motion.
All right.
Attorney Zettler, could you please help with the language for what I'm trying to describe? I would like us to make the recommendations to planning council and then to come back to us for a first reading, a second reading. Does that make sense to you, Attorney Zettler?
Let me, let me give it a shot.
Thank you.
I think the motion is to give direction to staff to, based on the feedback received from council this evening, prepare a draft ordinance to bring to council for additional feedback. And well, that could be the end of your motion.
All right, we have a motion. We have a, we have a motion in a second. Do we have any comments before we go to a roll call vote?
Can I get a little more clarification? Just because if we're bringing back to draft ordinance, we really need to know the details. Are we, are we just talking about the CT? Are we talking about full repeal or what?
All right. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Clark? Dutra? Montesino?
Yes.
Roscoe?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Salsido?
Aye.
Quiros Carter?
No.
The motion carries.
All right. Thank you very much. So with that, we can move on to, we don't have any emergency items. So we'll move on to item 15. I think we've thoroughly discussed bringing back the report. So are there any other requests that we have? Councilmember Clark?
I would like to revisit something. There, there's been quite a bit of disappointment with myself and a few of my colleagues. And if they'd like to speak up, they're more than willing to. It's been over a year since we have requested that when the agenda is published, all of the supporting documentation should be with it. And if an agenda is published and there's an item on there without supporting documentation, it just shouldn't be on there. We received information at like eight 40 this morning for reports that were brought to us today. And that does not give us time to actually look into things. We need time to do research, to ask questions. We, we cannot effectively legislate when we are given information at the 11th hour. And there, there's no more excuse of a learning curve at this point. I, I don't know if this is by design because I, I just, I can't wrap my mind around this anymore. But we need to get our information when the agenda is published. I, I don't know what else to say. I, I, so can we revisit this? Can we come up with some sort of a procedure or policy? Because it's really starting to wear on some of us. Thank you.
All right. Any other requests?
Oh, no, I was going to second that emotion.
All right. So do we have any other requests? All right. I don't see any other requests. So we're going to go ahead and adjourn.